Goochlin Christmas Mother this year, Ms. Robin Hillman, to tell us a little bit about this year's plans.
Thank you to each member of the board and to Mr. Burdesky for having me here tonight and allowing me to speak. So there's 48 days until Christmas, if you didn't know that. And, you know, each of us are starting to begin to think about, you know, gifts for our families and, you know, what we might be getting for our loved ones. And there are actually a lot of people among us in the county who kind of dread this season because they start to worry about how they're going to provide for their loved ones during this time. And the Goochlin Christmas Mother is a program that helps those families and individuals. We provide food, new clothing, toys and books and other essential items for Goochlin County families that qualify with children. And we also help senior citizens that are 60 years and older. And we also help adults that are disabled as well. So last year, the Christmas Mother program served 233 families in Goochlin. That equated to 642 individuals, actually. So it's about an average of three people per family that we helped. And we raised $68,000 to be able to support the program. So this year, in thinking about our Christmas program, it's been in business or happening for over 50 years in Goochlin. It's a wonderful tradition that Goochlin has been providing for its citizens. And, but not every family can be adopted. So we need to raise money for purchases for those families. And our goal this year is $70,000. From my perspective, on a personal note, I actually think adopting a family is actually the best way to be able to help the program. About 20 years ago, I had an opportunity to adopt a family through my company. And I took my son at that time, he was about seven years old, with me to deliver to the family. And the mother was so appreciative that she actually gave my son this little Christmas ornament here. And like Goochlin has the Christmas Mother as a tradition that happens, this is a tradition in our family. We hang it on our Christmas tree every year. So I definitely am promoting adopting a family because it's a wonderful experience and very rewarding. But at the same time, besides raising money, we are also looking to collect food and essential items that we need to go with those gifts as well. We have several entities throughout collection points throughout Goochlin. So all of the schools this year are participating. And they have all have specific things that they're collecting that parents can send to, through their kids, to schools throughout the month of November. And Essex Bank that is located in the Sandy Hook branch is collecting a lot of hygiene products and items for our families. And then each one of the Goochlin Fire and Rescue Stations are going to have collection points where people can drop off canned goods. We're looking specifically for vegetables, canned meats, canned fruits. We have a few other essential items and food things that we're looking for people to volunteer to collect. So I'm in conversations with various neighborhoods and churches trying to get other collections throughout the county. There are a few important dates that are coming up. This Saturday, we are taking applications for those families who need assistance. And we'll be doing that at the Goochlin High School cafeteria from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Sunday, the 24th, is when adoption's end. So between now and the 24th, you can contact us or me and we'll be glad to set you up with a family to adopt if you're interested in that. And then Tuesday, December 3rd, will be shopping day at Walmart. And Saturday, December 7th, will be the wrapping day. That's a lot of fun that day. And then on December 14th is when we distribute out the gifts and all the food that we've collected to the families. I know that Goochlin has supported the program before in the past and thank you very much for that. Anyone who is new to the program and is interested in creating their own new holiday tradition, please see me. And here's the contact information. Any questions?
Questions for Rob? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak during the citizen comment period? Please give us your name and address and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I don't know about that one. But anyway, I'm Wendy Hobbs and I live at 3055 Trambury Crossway. And I just want to first congratulate the encumbered that were reelected last night. I want to congratulate Don Sharp and Neil Spoonhower on winning the election. And say to the board that's here, the new board coming on, that we still have the same similar interests and that's what's best for our citizens. And if you knew anything about my campaign, you knew that I was for a broad man throughout this county. And you all have made a commitment to that. And so you're going to hear me say this until we get it throughout this county. The other issue is that I ran on was having housing options for the people that work and serve in this county. Those are, and of course, we all agree on being fiscally responsible. And so my whole point of coming here tonight is because you're going to miss me for a couple of months because I'm having surgery on my shoulder next Friday. And so I just wanted to congratulate you guys but also say to you that the expectations that I ran on and that you ran on are still the expectations of the citizens. And so we're looking forward to moving forward and meeting the needs of all the citizens in the county. And I am very proud to have been in the race. I'm very proud of what was accomplished in the race. And say to you all that together, we can do a lot of things in this county. And so working together, we can continue to move Goochlin in the right direction. So that's my comments for the day and I think I'm under three minutes.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. I think I believe you guys ran a great campaign and got the message out to a lot of people.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Murphy. I live at 12898 Holly Lane, Manneken Sabbath. And I want to thank the supervisors for your work. But at the same time, bring up an issue that's going to be pressing on the county and that is, development comes with a price. And some of those prices are long-term consequences. Less open space, more cars, traffic, more crime. Eastern Goochlin is seeing the most growth. Lot areas are not walkable, which means heavier traffic, possibly redoing intersections for pedestrian crossings like Short Pump is experiencing right now. Keep Goochlin rural, as seen on certain campaign signs. However, to my knowledge, there are no plans to preserve any of the numerous historic farmlands going up for sale in eastern Goochlin. More people will eventually mean more schools. Will there be land in eastern Goochlin for an elementary school? For a library? For a park? Reader's Branch is a new development that has had numerous erosion and sediment control issues, including the latest inspection by the DEQ. And this will soon be sent to the county and Goochlin will have 10 days to see if they're in compliance. However, in the meantime, Reader's Branch, which is a waterway, is filling up with sediment and is becoming Reader's trickle. What is the price of development to Goochlin's water, air, land and health? One thing the county has planned ahead for is sewage. Eastern end of the county is capable of handling wastewater. However, some residents in Hickory Haven and Samree Forest have paid in ad valorem for many years, but they still rely on aging septic systems. The new proposed sewer plan for these neighborhoods includes a connection fee that many residents cannot afford. And furthermore, the sewer line has the potential to connect to businesses on Broad Street. And have they been paying in ad valorem undeveloped land? As Goochlin grows, hopefully existing residents are heard rather than the short-term goals of developments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manneken Road. I try to, at least once a day, compliment somebody on something that they've done that has been of benefit to me or just someone not me. And we're going to go through some hearings tonight on ordinance rewrites. And I think that staff has done a lot of work on that. I have not participated in all of the public hearings, but I fully appreciate that there has been a lot, a lot of work done to get us to this tonight. And are there going to be opportunities to nitpick at some of these? I expect there would be. But before we get into the weeds, I just want to say, I certainly appreciate the work that the county staff has done to put this on the agenda tonight. And from what I've been reviewing and looked at, it's going to be an improvement. But I just want to say thanks to them. So I'm going to sit down. I was told I only had two minutes this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else?
Michael McDermott, 1879 Spruce Lane, Maidens, Virginia. And I also own property at 1576 Whipperwill Road in what one of your esteemed colleagues termed about eight years ago, "The Water Ghetto." Good evening, guys and gals. Thank you for everything you've done during your tenure. I know some of you had some tough campaigns this time around. And congratulations. And thank Ms. Hobbs for taking the high road in her comments. And it's going to be sad to see Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Minnick no longer here. But I know where to find you all. They have a new dish at the Oriental Restaurant in Centerville. Instead of Peking duck, they have lame duck. So, but nonetheless, I see Mr. Minnick's person filling in, that's going to be filling his shoes in the Water Ghetto in the back, Mr. Sharp. And I'm a little bit displeased. My neighbor, Ms. Murphy, touched on something that I'm going to get into a little bit. And I'm probably going to take a couple more, three minutes, but not too much longer. But, you know, she mentioned what's going on in the Reader's Branch development. And that came to light because of some things we were doing because of the lack of transparency we were getting from the county in looking at what was going on in Reader's Branch. And she determined that they were in violation of the silt fencing. And it's a shame that the county wasn't, doesn't have the bandwidth to approve a development like that and then go back behind them and make sure they're adhering to what they're supposed to be doing as far as the silt fence. And then Ms. Murphy had to, you know, get the DEQ involved. And we had brought this to the attention of Mr. Burdesky at our last community meeting for the sewage project. Now, one of the things that disturbed me is the TCSD started in 2002. So it's 2019. For the sake of argument, I'm going to be real, try to get to the point here. There's 57 parcels in the current project that have developed property. Okay? And I looked at my tax records over the last that many years. And mine is about average. And real quickly, my property, the development part, is $125,000. Okay? If you multiply that by the ad valorem, which is 32 cents per hundred, which we pay over and above the county tax, okay? So I'm just taking the ad valorem on the developed part of my property. That comes out to, over 15 years, about $6,000. 57 developed properties comes out to $342,000. So we've been paying that money in on developer, not the raw land. Okay, I'm saying, okay, you've got my land that the property's on. That's fine, okay? That's an investment that if somebody has raw property, they understand they have to pay the ad valorem on the raw property even though there's no sewer and water in some instances. But I'm paying that, we are paying that ad valorem additionally on the developed property. So that's $342,000. Where's it gone? And now you want to charge us $6,000 apiece to connect. Now, I've been told that's never been done before to kind of say, hey, look, you know, you guys have really paid for something you didn't get, okay? But I argue that the right thing to do as a one-off is for somebody to make a motion at some point in time and let us connect for free. We've paid for it. We've paid for it on the excess property tax. That's over and above our real estate tax in the TCSD. That's the right thing to do. You know, Ms. Hobbs talked about affordable housing. This is 57 properties of housing where your first responders, where your teachers, you know, it's affordable housing in the eastern end of the county. There's people there on fixed incomes. This is the, you know, the bread and butter, the salt of the earth of Goochlin County. And we've been paying the money. You know, we got sold the line of bill of goods. I'm not going to get into all that, how it was refinanced and this, that and the other thing. These bonds, when they were originally created, were ranked by merit. And Mr. Peterson's smiling, he knows who merit is. They were rated as the worst municipal bonds in the entire United States. Okay, we're past that. Let's do the right thing. But additionally, on this project, we're getting a lot of misinformation and lack of transparency because we had four different plans presented to us. And I want to affirm Mr. Minnick and also Mr. Sharp for being at the community meeting. But in digging through the voluminous amount of information that's now available to us, thank you, I found a drawing that Timmons did at the beginning of this year that shows a future sanitary sewer to serve undeveloped lots. And I'll forward this file to you, the email. Well, now, all of a sudden, these undeveloped lots are part of the project. Why? And it's really thrown a wrench into the works as far as the alignment. So all of a sudden, we have undeveloped lots that got snuck into this project. And now we're talking about potentially ripping up backyards and everything to accommodate these undeveloped lots. Wait a minute. Let's take care of the people with developed property that have been paying the ad valorem and not give something to others, you know, on our backs. And if you are, still the right thing to do is that 300, and my figures are very conservative. I did it over 15 years. My house is probably much smaller than a lot of the other ones. Okay? So it could be a half a million dollars. Okay? But that $6,000 connection fee is a lot of money for some people, especially people on a fixed income. The other thing is, when people connect, you all are going to be, they're going to be buying water now. You know, I mean, not buying water. They're going to be paying to have the sewage disposed of, which is an additional revenue stream. But I really challenge you to do the right thing here with the money. I also challenge you to, when you have projects, to do a better job of transparency. And when things are approved, as in the case of Reader's Branch, we need to be looking after these people that are doing construction to make sure they're doing the things that they're supposed to do. So I want to thank you all. Keep up the good work. And I'm proud to be a resident of Goochlin County. And God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the citizen comment.
Excuse me. One quick last minute. Thank you for indulging me. But I did notice on the agenda that there's $100,000 you want to approve for Bridgewater, which is a private subdivision. So you're bailing out Bridgewater with county money for roads that should have been done by the developer and you want to charge us to connect for something that we paid for.
Thank you. Do we have any answer for him or just take into it? All right, so the, move on to the public hearings. The first public hearing tonight is to consider a lease agreement with Goochlin County Chamber of Commerce for county-owned property located at 2931 River Road West. And I believe Mr. Stamey is going to take us through that.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Derek Stamey, Deputy County Administrator for Operations. I have two lease agreements here for your consideration this evening, the first of which is for the Goochlin Chamber of Commerce. Again, the action requested is to authorize County Administrator to execute a lease with the Chamber of Commerce. The address of the property, the county-owned property is actually 2931 River Road West. That's located across the street from the courthouse, just slightly to the south. The terms and conditions at a high level of the lease agreement are as follows. It's for a five-year term with an option for an additional five-year term. The lease is $500 a month, set to begin on or about March 1st. That's, we anticipate the revenue, the renovations to this facility to be completed probably in late December, early January. And at that time, we would look to move in our economic development folks. But the Chamber of Commerce, based upon their own lease, wouldn't be able to move in until March 1st. Leaseee would be allowed 24/7 secured and monitored access to the building. Again, the agreement is tied to repurposing of this existing structure. It would allow the Economic Development Office to relocate down the road as well. And the Chamber of Commerce and the economic development staff would share office space. The lease space includes approximately 500 square feet of shared space and 500 square feet of dedicated total building space. I've highlighted a very basic floor plan for you to the right. The shared conferencing space is the space to the rear of the structure or the top end of this diagram. And the office space and shared foyer space is to the bottom of the diagram. And those would house the offices for the chamber specifically. Renovations would meet ADA requirements and it would include administrative space, conferencing space and storage, new carpet, upgraded ceiling tiles, new lighting, all the basic amenities that would be required for the facility regardless of whether we had a lease agreement or not. And with that, I will take questions.
Questions for Mr. Stamey.
Ms. Greasy's also with us this evening. Thank you for being here.
Yeah. Would you like to say anything? I think you should come up and say that.
I can't hear you.
On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I think it is a great idea and it will help us, it'll help the business community to be able to come into where economic development is and then have the Chamber of Commerce there as well to assist. So we really appreciate the fact that the county wants us to be a part of this facility and share the space with economic development.
Thank you, Ms. Greasy.
Sure.
Any questions for the applicant or Derek before we open the hearing? Ms. Laskolet?
So, Mr. Stamey, we're going to renovate this building?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have an estimated cost?
Estimated cost right now is approximately $90,000. These are all renovations that would need to be done to make that building sustainable anyway. It was already in our inventory. It's primarily related to systems involving the roof, HVAC, carpet, plumbing, things of that nature, items that really needed to be covered anyway as part of a renovation to maintain the structure.
And have we appropriated that money?
Yes, ma'am.
We have? Okay, thank you.
It's in our CFP.
Just occurred to me that maybe we haven't really explained the concept. And just a reminder to folks, what this is, is it's going to co-locate economic development and the chamber in a business center. And so it's going to be considered the Goochlin County Business Center, co-located by those two entities. We will share sort of reception, greeting responsibilities. We'll have a co-located meeting space to accommodate business meetings. We'll also be bringing in different business coaching and counseling and training services, all to be hosted there at this center. We want to, you know, we want to show our commitment to sort of the downtown Goochlin Courthouse area. This is our commitment. I hope in five years, we're so successful that we have tenants that want to move in and completely vacate and do some new things in Goochlin Courthouse. We want to show our, we own this building. We own the next building that you're about to talk about. We're just showing our commitment to downtown and making this center for our business community.
Downtown. Uptown. Let's go to uptown.
Main Street.
Main Street. All right, thank you, Mr. Stamey. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up, give us your name, address and try to keep your comments to about three minutes. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the County Administrator to execute the lease agreement with the Goochlin Chamber of Commerce as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Burdesky, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Burdesky, would you do a roll call vote?
Ms. Laskolet?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Thank you all. Motion passes. Next item, Mr. Stamey.
Yes, sir. And the second item for consideration is a lease agreement with the Goochlin Historical Society. If you want, I can go ahead and jump in and explain that concept as well. The building directly across the street, located at 2924 River Road West, you may recognize it there. Most folks have driven by it pretty frequently. But this building's located across the street from the proposed economic development building. And this would actually serve as a place to house our historical society, which would simultaneously serve as a welcome center for the courthouse area and for the county. And I'm going to jump ahead one slide with that. But you can see the floor plan here to the right. We saw the exterior of the building. There would be some exterior improvements, roofing improvements, HVAC. You can see that the interior of the building, it's really just a rectangle with some load-bearing walls down the middle. We're actually going to look to knock down the walls along the left-hand side of the building and open that up for display and museum and welcome center space and then designate other areas for office, storage and a library. It's approximately 2,100 square feet. It previously served county functions, including parks and rec and the public schools. It will fully meet ADA requirements. There is a ramp to the rear of the building that will be reconfigured and reworked to make sure that we meet ADA requirements. It will include welcome center elements, including programming and marketing, which would be coordinated with the county. The rent would be $500 annually. And it's for a five-year term with an automatic five-year renewal at the end of that, at the end of the initial term. Glad to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Stamey. Ms. Laskolet?
Same question.
Yes, ma'am. Same answer, pretty much, with a smaller budgetary figure. These renovations would be necessary anyway for the building. I don't know if you've been inside of it, but it's in desperate need of some paint, some ceiling grid reworking, some HVAC improvements, roof improvements, as well as some entry improvements to both the front of the building and the rear. Overall, we expect it to cost approximately $62,000 to renovate this structure.
And that includes removing load-bearing walls?
Yes, ma'am. That includes removing a portion of the load-bearing wall on the left-hand side of the building. We would install a truss beam to help support the load.
Right, yeah. I watch home improvement shows.
You got it.
She's an expert.
We did appropriate that with this year's plans.
And we have appropriated.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Use one of my two sum parts. Ask a question because something you said prompted a question. In the welcome center elements, we're not staffing that with.
That is correct. It would be, our intent is to utilize historical society staff It would be, our intent is to utilize historical society staff when they're there.
You kind of said coordinate with the county, the historical society and county on the welcome center elements, and so we'll have some materials. They have 24, do they have 24/7, 24/7 access?
Yes, sir.
24/7, 365 access. Obviously, they're not going to staff it like that, but is there a minimum commitment we're getting from them in terms of having it staffed and open?
They have current operating hours that they have at their existing facility. We were, we don't have anything codified in writing as to what that expectation is, but we assumed, and we did speak with them about maintaining those hours as we talked through this agreement.
Okay.
And right now, it's, I believe that's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, 10 to 3:00. Close Mondays and Tuesdays.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
They had also indicated to us that they plan to do more on the courthouse green and right next to it that would increase their hours. They're just, they're still working through those plans, so we didn't get anything locked in with that.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking, when you start talking about a welcome center, if we're really going to tout that, then if it's always closed, it's not very welcoming, so we'll, we'll.
Don't disagree with you.
We certainly didn't want to make an additional commitment to contribute at this time towards those hours, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stamey. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this lease agreement, please step forward.
Good evening. Neil Spoonhour, 2986 Willa Trace Lane, Sandy Hook. This is not a for or against, but I just want, small business is important to me, and I don't know the background of where these businesses are moving from, and I just want to, and it makes, seems to make perfect sense, and I love that we're trying to utilize and gain revenue. I just want to make sure that we are keeping a fair playing field with local businesses that would potentially be getting this, and I think maybe Mr. Stamey misspoke when he said it was $500 a year. I think it's 500 a month. But I just want to make sure that we are, the county's not taking business off of other folks, but we're being competitive, utilizing the resources great. I think these do that, so I just want to make sure we look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonhour. Down to one minute.
Well, I'm wearing a different hat this time. Jonathan Lau, 1521 Manneken Road, Managing Director for Highway Information Media. And since 2009, we have partnered with VDOT and Virginia Tourism. And Mr. Lumpkin's comment about, and I don't want to now get into the weeds, but a welcome center is typically found at the boundaries of a Commonwealth. Visitor centers are within the Commonwealth. People are already in the presence, and when you have these conversations at Virginia Tourism, they make a significant demarcation between a welcome center and a visitor center. My encouragement would be that as this progresses, that there be an active outreach to Virginia Tourism, because they have a certification program for visitor centers that allow publication on the Virginia Tourism website. There are a number of specific outreach or networking opportunities that accrue to a visitor center that is ADA compliant, has a specified number of operating hours, and also has agreement to carry tourism information from other regions of the Commonwealth. So you would see brochures for Natural Bridge, or Bristol, or Virginia Beach in there, should they choose to go through the certification process. Again, that's, that's not a overnight, happens immediately. The biggest challenge, I think, will be the staffing, because it has to be open a certain number of days and a certain number of hours. Being closed on the weekends and more than two days a week typically is going to disqualify some, a visitor center from being part of the certified. You can still operate it as one chooses, but there are real benefits, possibly even some grant opportunities through Virginia Tourism. So I just would bring that to the attention. I will speak directly to the eastern shore. As you cross the Bay Bridge Tunnel and are going into the eastern shore, they have their own Tourism Authority. They have installed a touchscreen that allows people after hours to gain information about resources, hotels, restaurants, et cetera, that are available in that area. So technology, provided it doesn't conflict with the new sign ordinance that is coming in, are opportunities that could be also explored. So I think it's a great idea. I think, as you may know, through the Monakin's Water, agritourism is a very viable opportunity for the tourism industry here in the county, so I'm for it. I think there's more opportunities than we might realize, and I again commend the County Administrator for putting a focus on tourism through the Economic Development Office, and I'll sit down, even though the light hadn't gone off.
Thank you, Mr. Lau. Good suggestions. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Questions for Mr. Stamey, or? I have one if nobody has any. Mr. Lau mentioned something, and I think for a visitor center, it's important that it be ADA compliant.
Yes, sir.
Is that one of the things that we're looking at?
Yes, sir. We're making the building fully ADA compliant.
Same, same with the other building that we discussed already? Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments, or I'll accept a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or authorize the County Administrator to execute the lease agreement with the Goochlin Historical, Goochlin County Historical Society as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? If not, Mr. Bodeski, would you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Lashalet?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stamey. Next item is Ms. Hunter with the County Ordinance Amendment to repeal Appendix A and basically rewrite our zoning ordinance.
Ms. Hunter, are you doing both of the next two-in-one presentation, or are they separate?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bodeski, Joanne Hunter, Director of Community Development. I am very excited to present to you sort of the end of a two-year process, zoning ordinance rewrite. We started this back in 2017, and it has been the main focus of the planning office over the last two years. Lots of staff have been involved, lots of public meetings. The reason why we're doing the zoning ordinance rewrite is there's been, the ordinance is about 50 years old, and we've been seeing a lot of zoning ordinance amendments, meaning that our ordinance was not as up-to-date as it was. Also, when I first started working here about six and a half years ago, I was going through the ordinance, and as someone who's familiar with ordinances, I found the ordinance very cumbersome and hard to use. So I know if it was hard for me to use, then it really must have been hard for our citizens and people who want to come in and do work in the county. So it just sort of worked out that we were able to do this after we finished the comprehensive plan. So we've always talked about that the main goals of it is to modernize, simplify, and clarify the amendment, and this was our 2035 comprehensive plan implementation priorities. The very first one was to rewrite the zoning ordinance to make it more business and user-friendly. So we've actually been talking about this rewrite for about five years now. We talked about it throughout the comp plan amendment process, and it's taken us about two years to get to this point. During that two-year period, we've had a number of public comment opportunities on the rewrite. We've had over 20 Planning Commission work sessions. Through the summer, we broke the zoning ordinance down into three, hopefully more bite-sized pieces to review with citizens, and then we had four Board of Supervisors work sessions. We had a joint PC and board work session. We had two developer roundtables. We've reached out to various number of groups, and we also held a public hearing with the Planning Commission last month, and they did approve the amendment with a 5-0 vote. As I was thinking about how to present this to you tonight, you have seen it in many different forms. You have seen it during the three work sessions where it was in bite-sized pieces, and we went through a very detailed overview of every change that was made. When we did the Board of Supervisors work session, we did a very detailed, went through the entire code of all the changes that were being made. So I was thinking, how can we present this to you again? And I went back to our first presentation that we gave to the board on the zoning ordinance rewrite, which was in March of 2017, and we had a list of goals of what we tried, what we planned to achieve with the rewrite. So I'm going to go through each one of those goals and hit some of the items of how we achieve those goals through the rewrite, and then I am going to spend time at the end going through in more detail the sign ordinance, because that is, seems to have been the area that has generated the most questions and comments. So the first two goals, a part of the rewrite, was to correct the existing errors, inconsistencies, and redundancies. Because the ordinance was 50 years old, as we updated sections and chapters, there was often referrals to previous sections that no longer existed, or they were the wrong section number, or things that when the ordinance was first adopted, it was probably cut and paste from somewhere else, and it talked about, you know, the under, in the underlying zoning district, when it was the underlying zoning district. So there were a lot of things like that, which just weren't correct. And in all, we wanted to create a much more readable document that thinks people could easily find things in the regulations, that anybody who, if even if you weren't familiar with development or the processes, you should be able to pick it up and read it. And we think we have done that. We have achieved these goals. So both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinances were not chapters of the county code, they were appendixes. We are taking that, moving it from an appendix to Chapter 15 of the county code. If you look at our existing ordinance, we would have things like, there was article numbers, section numbers, division numbers, and then, so it was very hard to find things. Even if you looked at the table of contents, trying to find the Division 1, Section 1, it was very hard. So if you see the, see the new format, the sections run from 15.1 all the way through the entire code, so if someone settles you at 15233, you should be able to find it in a much easier way. We've wordsmithed and provided clarification throughout the entire code. The general reformatting of everything has, has made it easier to use, easier to find things. We put the permitted uses and conditional uses into one chart. Before, you had to run down a list that had no rhyme or reason of how the uses were. There might have been 40 uses in the permitted section and 20 in the CUP, and you just sort of had to run through them. Now they're all in one chart, they're alphabetically listed, and then some of the larger categories, larger lists, like the commercial and agricultural districts are broken down by categories. So if you have a residential use in the agriculture district, you just go to the residential section, and you should be able to find uses much easier. We also put all the bulk regulations into one easy-to-use chart. Right now, each district has several pages that talks about lot widths and setbacks and things like that. We were able to get all of that same information into one chart, which we believe is much easier to use. We renamed the B2 District to Neighborhood Business, and we moved it in front of the B1 District. So now, as you go through the entire zoning ordinance, it's in, it's in areas of intensity, so everything's in order as it gets more intense as you go to each district. We've added definitions for all of our uses. We had a number of uses in there that were not defined. In the overlay district section, we have four different overlays. They were presented in very different formats. You can tell that they were added to the code at different times by different people who wrote the ordinance. So we've reformatted them, so they're all very similar now. The Route 6, 650 overlay district had three different buffer standards, but once you actually put them on paper, they were all very similar. So things like that, we were clarifying and combining and making it just simpler to use. Also, another thing was the landscape requirements were spread throughout the code, so unless you knew they were there, you didn't know to look for it. We don't want it to be that hard for people, so we did combine all of that into a new article, and everybody knows that they can just go to the landscape section and find the information that they need. The next goal we had was to reformat the document to include appropriate locations for future sections. Before, we had one supplemental section, and anytime we had a new concept or any new things to add to the ordinance, it got put in the supplemental section. So like, things like the telecommunication and lighting and things that have come through in the last few years. So the supplemental section was very, you know, that's when we were getting all the divisions, it was really hard to manage. So you'll see after each section, we have left reserved numbers. So if something new comes in that we need to add to the ordinance, we have space holders, placeholders to add that so that we can continue the format in a correct manner. The next goal is to use charts, diagrams, and graphics for better quality, clarity. I think you'll see this throughout the entire ordinance. We spent a lot of time on the format and on the charts and on the graphics to make it much easier to read and interpret. So like I said before, all the permitted and CUP uses are in one chart, all the bulk regulations are in one chart. We added new graphics to the signage section where there were none before. Sometimes it's, a picture is worth 1,000 words, and we have found that they're much easier to describe things through pictures. We also improved the graphics for the overlay districts for how people should screen things and different things like that. And then we also devoted an entire section to graphics. This is Chapter 32, which is the, I mean, I'm sorry, Article 32. It's measurements and graphic, and lots of questions we get is, you know, every locality does it a little bit different. How do you measure lot width? Where can you permit accessory structures? How do you measure setbacks and things like that? And that whole chapter is dedicated to that, so I think that will also reduce the amount of questions that people have, and it's much easier to understand. The next goal was to align the zoning ordinance with our comprehensive plan and county policies. By doing this, we did revise and shorten the statement of intent for all the zoning districts. We will see, we specifically tied the statement of intent to the comprehensive plan. So if you look at the commercial district, B1, in the statement of intent, it will say this corresponds to commercial and flexible, and it's all the different uses with the comprehensive plan. So as somebody's coming through with a, with a use, it'll be very easy to determine whether it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan or not. We removed some generic and terms that weren't defined in the zoning ordinance, such as low-density residential, things like that. And instead of using those terms, we actually used minimum lot sizes. And then there's things like setbacks from primary and secondary roads. Well, we changed that language to match the language of our recently adopted major thoroughfare plan, so that every plan is connected and speaks the same language. There was also a provision in the Rural Strategies section of the comprehensive plan of how to encourage commercial reinvestment in our rural crossroads. To do this, we created a minor plan of development process. This encourages the reuse of existing buildings in these crossroads. It shortens the timeframe and the expense for going through the POD process. One of the other sections, strategies in that section talked about our, whether, whether the typical suburban development standards that you would find, say, in Centerville or on Patterson Avenue, are those appropriate for our rural crossroads? So through that process, we also allowed up to 25 parking spaces to be gravel, which gives you a more rural character than if everything was just paved, similar to the Centerville area. In the landscape section, and in our land use and in our rural character, we talk about encouraging the use of native plants in the comprehensive plan. That was also incorporated into our landscaping ordinance, as well as there were some strategies in the comp plan of preserving existing landscaping, and we did work in, so credit provisions if people preserve existing landscaping as recommended by the comprehensive plan. There was a goal to ensure compliance with state and federal laws. We achieved this by adding a number of state code uses that are required in our residential districts, so these would apply to agricultural and residential districts. We added things like the family day home, assisted living and group home for eight people. or less, temporary family healthcare structure, and then changed the term mobile home to manufactured home. And that's all consistent with the state code. We also updated the telecommunication ordinance to reflect changes from the 2016 legislation. We added a provision for small cell facilities, which also came out of that 2016 legislation. And then we've also updated the sign ordinance to be in compliance with Reed versus Gilbert Supreme Court ruling. And I'll go into that in a little more detail at the end of the presentation. The next goal was to delete unnecessary or unused portions of our code. We had two districts that have been on the books since the beginning, and they have not been utilized at all. And in reading through them, we didn't see why there was any incentive for anybody to choose that district, because other districts that are being used met the same goals. So we are recommending that we delete the Forestal Conservation District and the Planned Office Park. And then we also recommend that we delete a provision that allows anyone to ask for a use that's currently not in this code through the CUP process, which would allow people, which would allow us to do benchmarking and things like that for an ordinance amendment if someone has a new use that they'd like to introduce in the county. Next goal was to codify existing procedures and practices. We did codify the pre-application process. The pre-application process is sort of the core of our zoning and conditional use permit process. It starts the whole transparency that we want to encourage. That had always been a policy. Luckily, everybody was following it, but we do believe it's better now that it's codified, and it just clears things and, again, clarifies what we're currently doing into the code. There were sections, several sections of the code that staff was having to interpret, particularly like the parking section. We only had about 20 uses for parking. So we were always trying to find something that was close to it. Areas in the landscape ordinance were not very clear. So we were even finding that individual staff members were interpreting it different ways. So whenever there was anything unclear like that, we were able to clean up, make it very clear. We don't want to make interpretations, and we don't want anybody else to not understand what our code is saying. Other areas where we did some interpretations is things like, you know, we had a lot of references to one story. We actually put in a height limit, so that, things like that are the areas that we clarified, so that everybody understands the same goal. The last goal, another goal, is to include new uses and make revisions based on modern development practices. This is sort of the meat of what we did. We went through in detail at the previous meetings, all the new uses that we've added. We spent a lot of time looking at all of our uses, comparing ourselves to other localities, particularly in the agricultural and commercial districts. We added a number of uses, both as by right and CUP uses, so that we were on the same level playing field as our neighbors and other similar jurisdictions. We also clarified and simplified names for permitted and CUP uses. We had some things that were things like, you know, a radio-controlled airplane club and different clubs like that. And we would just changed it all to, you know, clubs, private clubs. So those were some of the cleanups we did. Another thing we did is we created a whole use standard section for certain uses. So there are some uses that don't really require the extra review of a CUP. However, being completely by right might not be the right way either. So we now have it where it's by right if you meet these development standards. And then if you can't meet those development standards, you can ask for a CUP. So that's a new concept that we've added to the rewrite. We've, in terms of modernizing it, we spent a lot of time on the home occupation standards. Several of our residential districts actually outright said in the ordinance that they prohibited home occupations. Home occupations are much more common now. We've also expanded home occupation where you can also have it, not limited to just your home as it is right now. You could also have an accessory building on your property. And then we also added rural home businesses as a CUP in the A1 and A2, in case you have employees coming to your home. The other area that we worked on was accessory apartments. The change was to allow accessory apartments by right with development standards and a detached accessory apartment with a CUP. We did add some provisions in there, since it was at the last boardwork session, that one of the development standards for the by right is to require them, the applicant to file with Circuit Court prior to the initiation of the use and at the transfer, an affidavit with the Circuit Court that a second dwelling is on the property and that they will comply with the use standards. And then there was some conversation at the work session about who could live in these. These are not rental units. These are just for family members. So we did some research with some other localities. And Hanover actually used a term that really, I think, indicates better what the use is than accessory apartment. And they call them accessory family housing units. And that way, we includes the word family in it. The definition of family includes servants that work in the home and different things like that. So my recommendation to the board is, if you do like this term, to change the term from accessory apartment to accessory family housing unit. You would need to include that in your motion if you decide to include that change. Other changes that we made to modernize it is we changed the lot width in the R1 and R3 from 200 to 150 feet if served by one utility. It was very clear to us, as we looked at all the standards side by side, that this district was off. It had a different sized lot size, but it didn't have a different lot width. We made a number of changes to the RPUD district, where we removed environmental incentives that didn't really make any improvements to the project. And they were very difficult to determine if they were meeting that standard. But we've kept the base density the same at 2.5. We've reduced the open space requirements in the RPUD district from 30 to 25%, but you can no longer include the perimeter buffer. So a lot of times in the RPUD districts, a lot of that buffer or that open space was the perimeter, which was already required. This will reduce the amount of open space, but it will push the open space more interior into the project. We've also added sidewalk requirements on one side of the street, except for short cul-de-sacs. Again, this is things that we looked at. We went through a lot of proffers. As part of this review of the zoning ordinance, we went through about five years of proffers and looked at things that were always being proffered in the residential and commercial districts and tried to codify them when appropriate. We also clarified how to determine number of lots when single-family and townhouses are developed on the same project in terms of access. Again, that's sort of something new that we're seeing, and I think we'll be seeing more of. We changed duplexes and triplexes for properties zoned after the date of adoption of this ordinance from by right uses to CUP uses. We added use standards for shopping centers. We revised subdivision improvements that need to occur at CO instead of building permit. We've provided an exception provision for those improvements. In the POD section, we added bonding provisions for lighting and landscaping. And as I spoke about earlier, we added parking standards for every use in the code. One thing we weren't going to handle, but as we got further into it, was the access management had always been in the subdivision ordinance. However, by that point, the case has already been rezoned. So it really is more of a development decision, not a subdivision decision. So we did move that to the zoning ordinance. We've codified our turn lane policy. And then we also added a provision for electronic message signs in our agricultural, commercial, and industrial districts with a CUP. So that is a summary of all the goals and how we think we achieved it. If you have any questions for me now, I can take them or I can continue on and talk about the sign ordinance.
I just wanted to ask you one thing on formatting. We talked about, and you mentioned, home occupation and the family accessory use. How do you find that?
So if you go to either the agricultural or the residential districts, which is where they're located. So if you go to, say, Section 102, 15-102, which is the A1, which would be page 145 on your packet. Again, all the uses are in this one district. This is a big one, so we've broken them down in categories. So the first section is agricultural. The next one would be residential. You see, on the, on page 145.
So you need to go to the zoning class first.
Yes.
And then you look at these uses.
Yes, that's.
So if someone wanted to, I'm just thinking of the layman.
Yeah, so the first thing, so every zoning district, it depends on what you can do with your property based on what it is zoned. So people would first need to find out what their zoning is. That is on the GIS system. They can look that up.
Right.
And then they would go to this, and it would give them all the uses that are permitted or permitted with a CUP.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a couple little quick ones. On the, in the lot width definition, the reason for changing was if there is a public utility. And I take it that means a utility provided by the county. So electricity doesn't count?
No.
Okay. And then, do you know what the cost of filing with the Circuit Court would be? Do we know what that is? If somebody wants to file for the accessory family housing unit?
It's somewhere between like $16 or something.
I'm not sure I know exactly what the cost of, just to file when it's not a, when it's not a transfer document.
Yeah.
You know, there's a tax, it's like a recording tax based on value, but I'm not sure when.
But it's a lot less, I guess, than a CUP today.
I think, yes, in other affidavits that have been filed, now this was a couple of years ago, was about $16. Maybe it's 20 now, but it's nominal.
Okay.
Okay, signs. So a big portion of time was, with this rewrite, was dedicated to the sign ordinance. Back in 2015, there was a Supreme Court ruling called Reed versus Town of Gilbert. And the U.S. Supreme Court ruled 9-0 that regulations that category signs based on the type of information they convey and apply different standards to each category are content-based regulations of speech and are not allowed under the First Amendment. So what that means is if you have to read the sign to determine what kind of sign it is and what kind of regulations the county or locality would allow, that is a content-based sign, such as directional signs, political signs, farm signs, things like that. Those are all signs that you have to read it to determine what type of sign it is, and those are no longer permitted. This Supreme Court ruling was very, very impactful. It basically rendered almost every sign ordinance in the entire country unconstitutional. So everybody's sort of been scrambling to kind of catch up and change their ordinance. This was a very difficult ordinance to write, but we do believe what we have is constitutional and would give us similar protections to what we have with our current sign ordinance. So I'm going to go into much more detail of the changes that we made in the sign ordinance. So we eliminated all of our content-based signs. We deleted all references to sign content and categories based on the sign purpose. So that included business, directional, farm, home occupation, political signs, real estate signs, special event signs, yard sale signs. You can't use any of those terms anymore. So you can only regulate the number of signs on a property and their location and how tall they are. So we revised the sign and construction sign definitions. We deleted definitions that refer to changeable copy signs. We added definitions for feather signs, flashing signs, minor signs, off-premise signs. We added all the new signs, what we're calling them. We prohibited signs that move, emit smoke or sound, carried signs or off-premise signs. Those are not allowed. And we added timeframes for the sign permit decision, and that's a 10-day process. We consolidated the requirements to maintain and remove signs, make sure they're in compliance with the building code. We created tables for the different categories that shows for, based on the zoning district, the number, type, sign area, setback, and sign height. Those are the things that we can continue to regulate. We did add height limits for all signs in each district, which we did not have before. We had to delete the by right signs showing time, date, and temperature and the weather, because those are content-based signs. We changed the sign setback from 15 feet to 10 feet in our agricultural and residential districts. And then we added sign standards for subdivision entrances. Through this process, we did have a number of people who came and spoke in favor of having electronic message signs. We also had some people who spoke with having some concerns with having electronic message signs. So we have spent a lot of time looking at the standards. Should they, where should they be appropriate? Where, what zoning districts? So we have come up with two different, well, one set of standards of if a CUP was approved, that they would need to meet these standards unless it was waived by the board. And then we also recently, since the last boardwork session, we came up with some standards to give the board guidance on what they would use to review these if an electronic sign permit comes before you. So first, I'll go over the requirements. The building and electrical permits would be required. The sign cannot be located in a manner which would cause confusion with traffic signals. The messages must be static, meaning there's no animation or videos or scrolling text or flashing. Those are deemed to be a little more impactful to driver distractions than when it's just a static sign. For the display, the messages cannot change more than once every minute. We did lots of research on this. We have found standards that range anywhere from five seconds to five minutes. So we picked once every minute. Again, this could be changed through the CUP process, and we could look at speed limit and things like that to see if, what is the appropriate standard. Transitions between messages can only be a black screen. In the event of a malfunction, the display must be changed to a dark screen. And these are all things that are built into the sign when they're constructed. If the sign is two-sided, both sides must have the same message. And then the last section area is the brightness controls. Illumination from the sign shall not exceed a half-foot candle above ambient lighting at any property line. That is the same standard for any lighting that is added as developed for any property that's developed in the county. So no additional light glare or light force would be over and above of what's currently permitted. The lighting cannot shine towards any dwelling. Signs are required to have an automatic dimmer and turned off between 11:00 and sunrise, unless the business is open during those hours. And then prior to sign permit approval, the applicant must provide certification that all of the, the sign can do all of these things with the brightness control. So there was some concern of if this was going to come to the board, would we get a lot of these requests? How would we review them? So we tried to come up with some standards for which the planning commission and the board would review these CUP signs. So it says, "In reviewing the application, the planning commission and board may consider the following factors, as well as other appropriate land use considerations: the proportion of the sign face that's going to be used for the electronic message, the use of the colors in the electronic message, relationships to nearby residences, distance to other electronic message boards, the speed limit of the roadway and the road classification, the general character of the area, and if there's any landscaping incorporated into the sign package." So all of those things would be things that staff would review as part of the application, provide comments in the staff report, and the planning commission and board can take that into account, whether they're deciding to vote either approval or denial for an electronic message board. There was also lots of questions about temporary signs. So again, this temporary signs, a lot of categories fall into this temporary signs, things like reali- Things like real estate signs, yard sale signs, political signs, all of those signs that are not up all the time. Now, all fall under this general category of temporary signs. So we are saying that temporary signs cannot exceed, the change here is from 25 to 32 square feet. The sign height cannot exceed 10 feet. A sign permit is not required. And then we've added this last change, which said, the new language states, "Display of temporary signs is permitted for one 180-day period during the calendar year, except there's no time limit for temporary signs on properties zoned or being used for agricultural or residential purposes." So if you are zoned agricultural or residential, you can have a temporary sign up with no time limit. And then two banner, feather signs or other signs that flutter, wave or move are only permitted for one 30-day period during a calendar year. So those are more of the, what people think of as the grand opening or the attention-getting devices. They would be limited to a 30-day period, but if somebody wanted to put a real estate sign or a political sign or something, it could be up. And it's a fixed sign that doesn't move, they could have that for 180 days. So what we would be asking tonight is that you repeal all of Appendix A and adopt this new zoning ordinance. The two things that are, need to be considered as, as part of your vote, because it's not included in the resolution, would be the changing of the accessory apartments to accessory family housing units and the changes to the temporary sign ordinance that was presented to you this evening. If this was approved by the board tonight, the effective date of the ordinance would be January 1st, 2020. And between when it's adopted, or if it's adopted, and that January 1st date, we would be working with MuniCode to get all the sections. So, you know, when it has the use standards, it would have the section number and you would click on it and it would take you right to that. If you would indulge me for a minute, there's a few people to thank, because we have been working on this so long. Lee Dunn on the planning staff has been my right-hand person, could not have gotten this done without her. Todd Kilduff, Tara McGee, Christina Neal, Debbie Byrd, Tom Coleman, Nita Barnes, David Lloyd and Gary Fisher. We would sit in the conference room, round table and fight and argue over this for many, many. We met, I guess, weekly for about six to eight months going through the zoning, zoning districts in particular. Both the planning commission spent a lot of time with the 20-plus work sessions. I think they are probably really glad to not have me talking about this anymore and have this beyond them. They have put a lot of time into this. The design review committee met with us and reviewed the overlay districts and spent some time on this and very appreciative to the board for all the extra meetings you put in and all your support. So thank you to everybody, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Hunter, Ms. Laskolet?
Okay. So yes, thank you very much, and I know this was a massive undertaking. But do have a couple of questions on this, back on these signs.
Yep.
You had mentioned something in your commentary tonight about hand-carried signs. Where is that in? I just don't remember seeing it when we did this. The 20, the first 25 times I saw it.
It's under prohibited signs. I will find the section number for you.
That's what I thought it might be.
Yes. And it is number?
I just didn't, I just don't see it. Am I missing it?
You're right, I don't see it either, and I don't, it was in there, I don't know how it got mixed up.
I'm not sure I have a question.
We can add that back in.
Well, no, well, wait a minute, before you do that, I should have kept my mouth shut.
Okay.
So let's take that with 15-414, item I. Signs on public property unless in compliance with a written policy are pursuant to a written permission from the appropriate government official. So if a citizen wants to walk in front of this building with a sign protesting something that's going on in the government, that's prohibited?
I'm going to defer to Tara, because there's so many legal issues with this.
I don't know today that we have a written policy about that type of use. I would suspect that we do not. What we were thinking about when we wrote that was when folks rent picnic shelters, the public facility use says what you're allowed to do in terms of a sign while you're using a picnic shelter at a park or something. And for that use, you know, it's permitted. And so we're thinking of things like that, as opposed to generally, we don't allow people just to put their signs up anywhere. But the situation you're describing with respect to picketing is a, you know, is a protected First Amendment use.
Well, see, I think it would be fine the way it is if we weren't doing hand-carried signs. So you mentioned it, I couldn't find it, so maybe it's omitted for a good reason. If we don't have.
Yes, I did that, that's exactly what I did.
Alright, so we're, so.
I don't think it would be a problem in any event, because what we would do is it would, we would adopt a, a policy for county property. If someone is hand-carrying signs or otherwise.
Sounds like a plan to me.
You know, picketing, it would be allowed, because there's no intention to prevent that.
Okay, as long as that's not what we're attempting to do.
No.
So we're not going to put, we're leaving hand-carried signs out.
Well, I don't know that she wants to leave it out for businesses. Like, I don't know if she wants to allow a business person to have a open house sign out there where the person carries and have it be exempt from the sign ordinance.
It's, it's, it's up, but it's up to the board, it's not my decision. It's if the board finds that Lady Liberty on tax day is offensive or the people that, you know, wave the, you know, mattress sale is offensive, we can add that back in.
So we've, we've taken it out?
It is not in there right now.
So, so right now, you could stand up there and sell mattresses?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm sure, you know, as much work has been done on this and agonizingly going through every step, probably things are going to happen that we haven't thought of. So I, I don't want to belabor, you know, and, and nitpick every little detail. I was just curious, when you made that comment.
And this is, you know, just like our existing ordinance, you know, there's going to be changes to it. And, you know, in three months, something may come before us that we hadn't thought of.
Exactly.
And so an ordinance, this is not the final, this may be the final day, but it can always be changed.
One thing I do want to make the board members aware is that Joanne, in particular, and others have done such a phenomenal job going through this time and time and time and catching things and catching things. However, I will tell you that the ordinance is before you tonight, not to have substantive changes made by staff, but we are going to continue, we're going to couple of fresh sets of eyes on it to catch typographical errors, punctuation errors, wording, you know.
Capitalization.
Nothing substantive. We have talked specifically about the definitions, maybe being able to be more consistent in word use, not to use parcel and then lot and then parcel and then lot. If we meant lot the whole time, let's just say lot the whole time. So a little bit more than just grammar, but not substantive changes. If Joanne and I next week discovered that hand-carried signs was not in there, we would not put it in, because that would be a substantive change. But if we decide that we don't need to say parcel and lot, we can really just say lot and that covers the whole thing, we feel free to do that. And the idea is, you know, Joanne has just worked so hard and others on the substance of this, that we just need another month, usually, let's just get some clean eyes on the rest of it, but no substantive changes. So that, that is the posture that is before you in tonight.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense, absolutely.
Are you done, Ms. Laskolet?
I am, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we'll run that exact same provision, so I don't have to turn the page. 15-1414, prohibited signs. Letter A is outdoor advertising or billboards. Do we have any in the county now?
Yes, we do. We have two on Broad Street that are grandfathered in.
Okay, so this says prohibited signs, but it would say any sign.
Those are existing non-conforming signs, so they fall under the non-conforming. So if, if they're destroyed by more than 50% for a storm or a tree falling on them, they could not build back.
They could not be rebuilt.
Right.
That's correct. I mean, yours, your new ordinance, it becomes effective January 1st, 2020, but anything that exists today that has lawful zoning remains lawful in the future, subject to.
And that, that provision, it was in the existing code as well, that no outdoor advertise, billboards were permitted, so that's not a change.
So if I was to try and use some quasi-legal terms, these are incurrence tests, not maintenance tests. So that you could not put up a sign today, but you can maintain a sign that's already up?
Yes.
So it's an incurrence test, okay, thank you.
I'm glad you explained that.
As long as the repairs don't cost more than 25% of the assessed value.
Yeah, because if it's materially damaged.
Those signs that we have, they are assessed?
Yes.
Okay, and then if you, we, we were on the questions page before. If you go to the questions page at the very end.
The temporary signs?
No, this, if you go, if you go to the last, the last page where you had a question mark, never that one, stay there.
That one, okay.
You need to add your name to that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None? Okay, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. Give us your name and address and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Linda Moore, 2164 Prophet Road, Manneken Sabbath. I want to thank you all for this rewrite. I am trying not to be real nitpicky. There is just one that is sticking in my craw. And it really has to do with the community meetings. Over the last five years, I've gone to the good, the bad and ugly of community meetings. And I think we, we could come up with a real easy fix to this, the solution by making kind of a little bit of a standard for community meetings that wouldn't put a burden on anybody. It would help the citizens to understand exactly what is done to help the board of supervisors understand what they're dealing with. When the, the staff report tells you all exactly what you're dealing with when, when you get a case before you. What we get from the developer is pretty pictures that really gives us nothing of substance. We have to go and dig and dig and dig and dig, as the young lady told you. And we've got to find out exactly what this ordinance is supposed to be, what it's supposed to look like, how it's supposed to comply with the comp plan. And it takes enormous amount of hours, stress and strain. So, and then we come in before you and present, and then we, the developers look at us like we're, we're crazy. You know, why are you here? Well, we're here to protect our, our communities. And I think a community meeting should be a true community meeting. I have nothing against this, but we should have the facts, that the same facts that you all have at your disposal, we should have at the community meeting to tell us. I, I tried very desperately to inform my neighbors so that we can come and intelligently speak to you at public hearings so that we're talking intelligently and participating in the process. But we need the information to make informed decisions and to participate fully. And I think the community meeting is the first thing, I'm sorry, can I have just finish my thought? And I think it can be organized in a way that every community meeting is the, has the same standards and it will not put a burden on the developer to, at all, to, to comply with that. If, if you're going to be evaluating it, the, and in the first place, it says that it's going to be reviewed, evaluated by the development, Department of Community Development, then why can't we have that information? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Good evening, Lisa Melton, 3701 Falcone Gardens Road. Just a quick question of clarification. I know this is a lot of work that you guys put into the zoning. Going back to the slide that talked about deleting the, the use of CP, the CUPs, if you can go back to the slide, I don't, where it's, so if it's no longer, if it's not currently there, you won't, you'll, you'll delete? I can't remember the wording exactly. It's right at the contour at the beginning.
Oh darn, your three minutes are up, Lisa.
That's alright.
Joanne misses the section.
Yeah, that's currently not in the code through the CPU process. So does that, you also added a point that says by right. Does that kind of give you an option there? Because it's no way the code can even think about everything, you know, that, that a conditional use permit could actually offer. So is that by right addition that's later on? Will that address something else there? So if you can just kind of clarify that a little bit, that's my. Makes sense, you guys there?
Good question.
Oh, question about the signs too, let me throw that out there. So we, we want to think about it, and that, this probably covers, you know, kids out there doing car washes. This is the school teacher, me. You know, we don't want to stop that kind of thing when they're trying to raise and do fundraisers, so.
Right, gotcha, I agree.
Anyone else?
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manneken Road. And basically, I just want to iterate my earlier comments that this has been quite a bit of effort. And there are just nuances in here that we are not going to become aware of until the CUP comes in. But if we don't have a starting point, we don't even know what we want to, to change. So again, I just want to commend the staff for going through this. And any comments I would make about, well, what about this, what about that, would all be conceptual and hypothetical at this point. So I will reserve my remaining minute 43 seconds for that public hearing where I want to come in and talk about how that sign ordinance aspect needs to be changed, so. But thank you again for, and I believe at one time I heard Ms. Hunter say that this ordinance rewrite would have cost the county a half million dollars if we had brought in outside consultants. So I'm not sure when bonus review time comes around, but we might want to keep that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Questions, discussions, would you be able to answer?
Yes, respond to Ms. Melton's question. So right now, the way the code says, it says that anybody could come in and ask for any use that they want and just be a CUP. So for example, someone in the R1 district could say, even though it's not a permitted use in the district, I want to put a, a fast food restaurant in my district, and they could ask that for a CUP. I want to put apartments in this district, and they could. And they could ask for it through CUP. We felt like that did not have a level of transparency where we have a list of uses. You buy a piece of property, you look at what could be, the uses are in that district, and then somebody could come in and ask for any use with the CUP. There is a provision, if we delete this, that people can ask for an ordinance amendment to add a use to a zoning district. That would give staff an opportunity to benchmark it, to determine if it's appropriate in that zoning district. And, you know, that would apply countywide and look at where all those properties in the county are zoned. So there is a method to do it. It just wouldn't be through this CUP process. Hope that answered the question.
Thank you. I think there was one more question about being able to hold a car wash and have a sign.
Yes. So if we don't, the way it is right now, that would be allowed because we do not have handheld signs in there.
Let me just ask you about that as I was looking at it as we, and that is, wouldn't a hand-carried sign fall under the definition of a temporary sign? I'm just not sure. A temporary sign is any sign not permanently affixed to the ground or a building. So I don't remember us having a discussion about that. So I know you and I are caught short here taking a look at it.
We wouldn't, if it's not in there, we would not prohibit someone carrying a hand-carried sign.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Hunter? No?
No.
Ms. More brought up the standard that folks use for community meetings. This is something I think we have had other conversations regarding. The community meeting process, even at the staff level, does not dive to the level of detail that we prepare for the planning commission that follows. In some ways, the developer is presenting sometimes rather conceptual concepts to get community feedback before they actually formalize even their submissions to the county. And so I think her point's still well-taken that they can be inconsistent. And so whether we do that here in the zoning ordinance or by policy is something that we can think through a little bit further as we move forward. It's a little chicken and egg for some of the developments that come in, but at least the information and level of consistency, we can look at that in more detail even outside of this rewrite.
So our pre-application process falls very, very, very early in the process. It's sometimes just a very conceptual idea. There's no fee for applying, putting in a pre-application. With the pre-application, we do ask that you have a community meeting. We do require that you have a, some sort of a draft conceptual plan. But it's really at that point, just getting general information out there so that they can get general feedback, so that when they file their official application, they are aware of the concerns and maybe perhaps can include in their application ways to address those concerns. Some applications don't even move forward after a pre-application meeting. We've had a number where we've had lots of opposition or lots of concerns at a pre-application meeting, and the applicant hasn't moved forward with the application. We also don't want to put the burden of them having to do a lot of detailed drawings if we don't know what the concerns are going to be. They could spend, you know, $10,000 doing a conceptual plan, and the citizens will say, well, no, I don't want that there, I want a buffer there. And so it's so early in the process, we try to get as much information as possible. But really, staff uses those meetings and the developer to get the concerns so that when we are reviewing the case, it is, we have a better, we have a better idea of what the concerns are going to be.
Right. The community meeting is actually input into the staff report.
Yes.
It says when it was held, how many people, who were posted, and on what grounds, and all that's in the report, so.
And I think I'm sure the board members are aware, as is Ms. Hunter, that when a application has a significant change, then staff recommends that an additional community meeting later in the process occur because it no longer really matches what the citizens were first told. And so while that's not, again, I don't think it's in the ordinance, it's today the policy that an additional community meeting may occur, some even more than one additional community meeting. And when there are significant changes to applications, and try to make sure that community is kept abreast of those significant changes.
And those are, that is something that's unique to Goochland. I've worked for several other localities. Nobody requires a pre-application meeting prior to a formal application. You know, we put that on our website, we email it out to people if you sign up for it, we put the zoning sign out there. We want people to know and get that information as early as possible. Will they have all of that information at that time? No, but it gets enough on their radar to know whether they need to be following it or not. So that is over and above what any other locality does to try to get the word out before a case is even filed.
Any other questions for Ms. Hunter?
Yeah, I have one. Back to the signs quickly. If I want to open a coffee breakfast place in downtown Goochland, down from the new visitor center, and I want to put a sandwich board sign in front to advertise the breakfast special or the flavored coffee of the day or something, I don't think I have to get a permit.
That's correct. It's temporary sign, so it'd be.
But I can't have it there more than half the year.
That's correct. 180 days.
Okay.
Can you if you change the flavor?
Can't read the sign to tell you what it says.
Oh, good answer.
She is well up on that.
Been reading her court cases. Okay. For one, so I can't do every other day. I have to do one block of 180 days.
That would take you through, through spring to fall.
Can those, would a sign like that be, if a restaurant uses it today, is it grandfathered?
It's tough to answer a question like that. Being a conforming use or a non-conforming use is very difficult when it's the type of thing that is moved in and out. You know what I mean? Right. So in one respect, they start that use again new every day, on another respect, they've been doing it daily. And so I'm not sure either Ms. Hunter or I feel that we could opine at this moment whether it would be grandfathered, but.
So somebody could be doing this, and they could be told January 2nd that they're now in violation of.
Well, we are still maintaining a complaint-based code enforcement. So no one would be telling them January 2nd. And again, the sandwich board is particularly with the, because it comes in and out, does it remain, and all that sort of thing? I think that's difficult to opine at this moment.
One more comment. You might consider the whole definition of temporary sign, and I might comment on it when we wrap up here. But I've struggled when, I took a big run at this weeks ago, and thank you all for considering. And I know it's been an awful lot of work, and it's really, I've come to realize we can't let perfect be the enemy of good, or really in this case, pretty good, close to great, and perfect's impossible, I think. And we just will, I think going forward, I'm going to be receptive to visiting this when issues come up. Because I think we can get, I think there's room for improvement, there's room to address what the community wants. But temporary sign, I've struggled with this. To me, a temporary, and most people I think would look at temporary, and that's time versus how affixed. The definition we say is any sign, banner, pennant, feather sign, or other advertising medium not permanently affixed to the ground or a building. And that's the end of the definition. But in 15-417, we realize that temporary signs, I would say, are defined as signs that only stay out there for 180 days. Maybe that's a twist, but as a concession, could we, in the definition at the end, put a parentheses and say, see Section 15-417, close parentheses? I think that would make it a little user-friendly or when somebody's going through and trying to, they'll jump right to, I think, what is really more defining of what a temporary sign is.
That would be right in line with how we've tried to clarify and make things consistent and easy to find. So yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Good question. Other comments, questions? No comments or questions? Do we have a motion to approve as modified? I think if we didn't discuss the question about family housing unit, but we would have to modify, correct?
Yeah, it sounds like there could be a total of three things that have been discussed as modified from what was in your packet. The changes presented to the sign ordinance that were on your, on the DAS, the change to the title of the accessory use, and Mr. Lumpens has just suggested an amendment to, a reference to Section on Temporary Signs within the definition. If someone wanted to have a motion that was incorporating all of those, those would be mentioned as the amendments that were brought up today.
And just if I wait after the motion or whatever, I do have a general comment on this. I just wanted, this sign piece is, again, I also join in. I know it was a lot of work. I'm really impressed and I'm amazed. And I, when I dove into it and really tried, a lot of things bothered me about it, but when I dove into it and y'all gave me feedback, and I dove into it some more and read cases, it's very, very difficult. No getting around that. You used the word, if we find things offensive, you know, we can do things. And I understand what you meant, but I was a little uncomfortable with that phrasing because I think what I'm looking for is economic benefits to the community, and as we say, enhanced opportunities for communication and traffic safety. When we were talking about the person spinning a sign and things like that, those things make me think about traffic safety, and those are, I think, the focuses. And I think it goes back to what does a community want, you know, aesthetics. We talk about aesthetics. And then when we get into the electronic board, electronic message board signs, I think that's going to be a challenge with aesthetics. And we left our last, I think, group meeting on this with Ms. O'Rick pointing out, please think of a way to not, you know, clutter. And I think, again, of downtown with, you know, electronic message board signs every, you know, 50 feet. So those are, I think, things we'll have to, I've got lots of ideas, but I think we're getting there. I would be fine not being so liberal with temporary signs, but I think this is a good place where we are for now. But I will say on the electronic message board signs, it costs, all of them are going to have to have a CUP. So that means somebody's going to have to pay 750 bucks to go through a process. And we talk about them being permitted in agricultural, commercial, and industrial districts. I guess commercial also equals business, with a CUP. And then it says, the following standards are required unless waived by the Board of Supervisors through the conditional use permit approval. Well, I'm telling you right now that if anybody comes in here with an application for an electronic message board sign that meets these requirements, I'm never going to vote against it. I'm always going to vote for it because we've set forth the standards, and we have really, we have these words up here in terms of these phrases before that give us some guidance. But I just, I'm uncomfortable using that as a tool to regulate whatever we're trying to regulate.
Third page, you can hand out. Back to the second page.
I'm just reading 15-416. So I just wouldn't want, this is, of course, an electronic sign costs a lot of money, but if I'm putting down my 750, and I've met the standards that the board has set forth, I'm uncomfortable not approving that. If somebody comes in and said, hey, I've met what you want, because all of these other things are very subjective. And if we are concerned about distance between signs, I would love for us to define it so that somebody can come in and say, hey, I've got a distance problem before I put my 750 down. I know I have a distance problem. So I just hate to put particularly small businesses in a situation of, you know, basically buying a lottery ticket, you know, and just hoping that the board is okay with it, particularly if I come in and meet the standards that have been set forth. So I'd just say, if somebody comes in, meets the standards, I'm going to be very inclined to approve it unless they're, unless I sense that they're trying to do something fast and fancy and get around our intent here.
No, I read it differently.
I do, too.
I read it that if you don't meet all the standards, the board can waive them.
If you don't meet.
If you don't meet, it says the following standards are required, so you have to meet them all to do this unless waived by the board. So I'm thinking it's kind of the opposite, that I can't meet all the standards, I want the board to waive it.
Then why do we make somebody go through a CUP process? If staff could say, you meet our standards that the board has, we're not going to make you plunk down this money. You meet the standards. What's the point in going through a CUP process if they're not trying to deviate from the standards?
Well, let me just clarify because there are two different sections, and I think everybody knows what you're talking about. But at the very top of this section, A through G are not standards, they're considerations. So the distance to other electronic message boards is going to be a consideration. And the speed limit of the roadway and the road classification is a consideration, and the general character of the area is a consideration. So nobody's going to know how they fall under those considerations because they're not standards. Those are things for the board to decide. But at the same time, the standards below are going to be generally what are expected of signs unless you want to ask the board to, as Mr. Alvarez just said, unless you want to ask the board to waive those. Staff, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it, but you can ask the board. But my impression would be that somebody's application would say, I'm this far from other electronic message signs, the roadway I'm on is this speed limit, the character of the area in which I want to put it up is, you know, Collector Road with businesses nearby. Those things are all going to be part of their application. And then if they need to request an exception or a waiver from the standards set forth below, that would also be a part of it. But there certainly is a legislative piece in those upper considerations.
Sure. Mr. Chair, if I could, John, I mean, kind of the way I look at this, those standards are kind of prerequisites. If you want the board to consider this, you have to at least do these things, and then we can start to consider A through G. But if you don't do the prerequisites or the standards, if you don't comply with them, you can still bring it and ask to have it waived to get to those considerations of A through G. But I don't view compliance with the standards as entirely sufficient. It's sufficient to get considered, you know, A through G, as kind of an automatic get-to-the-consideration phase of the thing, but not automatic to get the approval, if that makes sense.
I'm beginning to see that maybe I was looking at it a little, maybe I had the steps flipped around. But then when I look at the standards, if I'm coming in with my, ready to write my check, but I want to have an idea how it's going to go, use of colors, general character of area, I mean, use of colors, I could probably change. I mean, we already said you can only have one color. So I mean, hopefully, we wouldn't get hung up on, you know, you can't pick a color that satisfies us.
Well, I think this.
I just, I just want to, what I'm looking at is, I want applicants to have as clean of an understanding of what can be approved as possible. Because if I'm getting ready to put 750 dollars down and put an order in for a sign and go through all this, the more, and I want the guidance for ourselves, too, when we're making a decision. Because then we're subject to, it's like, why did you give it to them and you didn't give it to me? You know, then we're calling, well, the general character, or you had chose the wrong color, or you're too, and I really struggle with the distance one. Because then that just means first one gets approved, and then somebody coming along, starting a business, like, darn, you know, the guy three doors down beat me to the electronic message sign, and I can't get one.
Mr. Chair, I'll tackle this one again here and see what I can do with it. We've kind of been through this before in other areas where we've done some groundbreaking into new areas. And I don't know if we want to include, you know, barn weddings or other craft breweries or distillery. I mean, we've done some groundbreaking, and what we've done is initially given ourselves some ability to take a lot of considerations into account. But then after a period of time goes by, and you've had several come through, we've almost, you know, backed in or developed a set of consistent standards, conditions, what have you. This is, in my view, is kind of a groundbreaking. We don't have any electronic signs yet. And then maybe over time, if we do develop some clarity, depending on what comes through the pipeline. And then I could see that as time goes by, developing that clarity and that certainty. But going into groundbreaking, it's hard to see if that makes any sense.
It does, and I, and I, that I have thought about, but I'm really, I think it's, I'm inclined, the more we can move to giving clarity to applicants as to what's expected, the more comfortable I am with. Because the less comfortable, the less clarity we've given to them and the less, and these kind of little mushy standards just make me uncomfortable up here trying to decide what are we really looking for. The lands, and the less we have to negotiate with applicants from, from sitting up here is better, too. Landscaping incorporated into sign package. I'd love to be able to give the staff, like, you know what, this is what we're really looking. If somebody wants to come in and wants to get their application over the hurdle, here's some of the landscaping that you might want to add that the board likes. I mean, because right here, it's landscape, but maybe, we don't want to try to define it too much right now to give the flexibility you're talking about.
Right.
But on the flip side, I don't want it to be so, so, such that an applicant can't really figure out, I'm just throwing darts when I'm putting this together to see what the, what the board really wants. So, anyway, the motion's too complicated, though, for me to make it to approve all this, so I'll leave that to somebody else. I've had the record for the longest one already.
You added all the complications, what are you talking about?
I did the Bridgewater one, that was, that was the record enough.
All right. Other questions, discussions?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I think Ms. McGee did hit the three areas of change if the board was comfortable, that you'd be willing to accept as amendments to, to the action on the table. If there's anything else you'd like considered, we can certainly add that.
Can Ms. McGee repeat?
Yes.
Repeat that.
If you were to make a motion, what would it sound like? What would a motion sound like?
The information ordinance that appeared in the packet has been revised by three things that we've discussed tonight. Changes to the sign ordinance that were handed out and shown. The wording for the accessory apartment was modified. And Mr. Lumpkins suggested that the definition for temporary sign include a reference to the section that discusses the regulations for it.
15 dash 417, yeah.
I think a motion that references these things would be clear enough that everyone would know it was passed and the appropriate changes would be made to what was in the packet.
Okay, ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I move that we repeal all of Appendix A, the zoning section of the Goochlin County Code, and adopt a written, rewritten zoning ordinance as Chapter 15 with three changes. First is Section 26, the sign ordinance section has been revised. Change the wording of the accessory apartment, modify the accessory apartment classification. And under definition of temporary signs, we will reference Section 15 dash 417. How do I do?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any additional discussion?
Yeah, if I may, let me ask, Ms. Hunter, can I ask you one question on, how'd you land on the 30 days on the feather signs? And I'd ask you a while back, a few weeks back, I was at Leaks Mill Park and the mountain biking team was up there and they had several feather signs and a tent that had Goochlin on it. And is there anything about being in that park that they need, I mean, because they can only, this is one 30-day period during a calendar year, so if they go out there, put a feather sign up and then take it down, I think they're done.
That's a public place, too.
Yeah. So the 30 days is in the current code, so that's similar to what we allow now.
Okay, so that was just picked up from?
Yes. And I'm not sure that the, again, if I think it through, they're putting those signs up with respect to the facility use policy. While you're in a public, while you're in the county park, you can put up certain signs in the same way that somebody could put up a sign for the McGee family reunion, should we have one at a Leaks Mill Park. But, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that you couldn't have.
Right. And if they have a special event permit also, that addresses signage, so it's allowed through, it may have been allowed through that process.
With my coffee shop breakfast thing in downtown Goochlin, I could probably, I could do my sandwich board for 180 days and then stick a feather sign for the next 30 and I'd get signage for 220 days.
Is this a fiscal year or is this?
It's a calendar year.
Plus, all your signs that you can already have, a freestanding sign, an attached sign, or a projecting sign.
Well, the rest of the time, I could have somebody out there spinning.
And I could hold the sign for you.
As long as that comes with a cup of coffee.
I'll do it for a cup of coffee and a bagel.
I must have written hundreds of ordinances and that sign ordinance was by far the hardest I've ever had to deal with.
Thank you.
You could have that sign inside the window, correct?
Those are not counted.
So you could have, just inside the window, you could have the sign saying, "Today's special is soup and sandwich."
Can I have that?
That's not considered a temporary sign?
No.
Window signs are.
Inside.
It has to be inside.
Your environment.
A sign, a sign on your car outside.
It's in the window.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
Oh, please.
Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Budeski, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Ms. Lashawlette?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Yay.
We're not going to stay till 2:00 AM, but could we take a quick break? Till 9:05 per the clock.
Please clock.
In light of the zoning ordinance just being adopted, through that process, we did establish a minor plan of development process. The purpose of that was to support and encourage small business, promote reinvestment in commercial properties, reduce paving requirements, and reduce the time and cost for the POD approval. We do need to set a fee for this. We are recommending a fee of $250, and this is the same fee as our rural plan of development. Be happy to answer any questions.
That's it.
That's it. I talked enough last time, I kept this one short.
Any questions from? I have, I have a question as I, as I read through all the fees. My question was, what is a comprehensive plan amendment? And why is there a fee for that?
So, we typically don't do that a lot in the county. In fact, there hasn't been any done probably in the last 10 years. But if a developer is looking at a project that is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, they can choose to go through a comprehensive plan amendment for the consideration of a change in the designation prior to submitting their zoning case.
That, yeah, I had never noticed that until going through this. And I was wondering, I mean, that's sort of what you do with the zone, with the rezoning. People say it's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan and we can waive it. So we, so why would somebody apply to change the comprehensive plan if the board can waive it? Or, or the board could reject the comprehensive plan change? So not...
I mean, a developer may, may want, may think you're open to changing it. Say, for instance, somebody developing the property that's in the comprehensive plan today that asks for larger lots because there's no sewer capacity, but today there is sewer capacity. Rather than fight perhaps the citizens and the board over the fact that their density isn't in compliance with the comp plan, they could only come forward first with a revision to the comp plan, and then they would file their zoning and it would be in compliance with the comp plan. So I, we haven't seen it done, but I can see why you might.
I mean, we had that issue, I think, with Reed Marsh, that exact issue where...
Right, and I didn't mean to suggest that...
No, no, I know, but that's, that's a good example.
It just happened to come to my mind, I was not suggesting.
The reason why it's not very popular is because it, it's not just a quick process. If someone's going to do a comp plan amendment, it opens up the door and we look at lots of different things. And it could be a six to nine to 12-month process where they can go through the rezoning case, you know. It's just, the land use plan is a guide, but it's typically used if someone's going to be doing a large-scale change, not just to inch up the density or something like that. You know, say perhaps something was designated for industrial and they wanted to change it to apartments or something like that. They would do a comprehensive plan amendment, because you would look at different things, roads differently, things like that, so. It's an option, but it's not a well-used option.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Hunter?
One, Mr. Chairman. So if this were not approved, what would that mean to the planning process?
So if someone were to submit a minor plan of development, there would be no fee. So this is establishing a fee for the minor plan of development process.
And that's really all it's doing?
That's all it does, yes.
And it's the same fee as a rural?
Yes.
So... Can, can you explain again what a minor, what would it entail?
The minor POD, what they need to submit? It's the same as the rural POD. And what they do is they put, can print off an aerial photograph from our GIS system, so they don't have to pay for engineered drawings. And there's, there's a list of things that they need to provide and show. They need to show all their buildings and they can hand draw these in, show the setbacks, show where the parking areas would be located, where there are access dumpsters, lighting, that sort of thing. But everything's just a hand-drawn sketch instead of paying for an engineer to do a detailed engineer drawing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman. So, so Ms. Hunter, so we're not charging a fee now?
Well, it was just, this is a new process that was created with the zoning rewrite.
We just created it five minutes ago.
So we don't have a minor POD process now. This is, this is a new, new process. So we're sort of putting it on the books and establishing a fee for it.
And it's saving money for people who otherwise would have to spend a base of $725 and then more for residential or commercial. So this is a quick, easier, much less expensive.
Gotcha.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any other discussion? Now I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in support or against this change, please step forward.
Jonathan La, 1521 Mannickin Road. What kind of brought to mind is, I think with Mr. Fleming recently had his situation with his trucks, and I believe staff came up actually with a workaround or a solution that, that seemed to work. Was that similar, was that similar to, okay. And so it makes sense to me that there would be an option for someone who either has not attended, as Ms. Moore has, all of the ordinance rewrite workshops and is aware of the details that are involved and wants to keep doing business and finds out that because things have changed and why I like the idea that they can do it a little quicker, a little easier, and I guess staff time would be involved. And so if we have a cost or an expense for doing that review, 250 strikes me as reasonable. Particularly, it seems that it's going to be business-related, though I guess development doesn't have to be business. So I think it's a good idea and I like the idea that smaller people and just tweaks aren't incurring $700,000 costs. So, yay, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. La. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional discussion?
Chairman, I move that we adopt the ordinance amendment to the Goochlin County Code. Be scheduled to add $250 fee for minor plan of development review as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have two seconds. Mr. Budeski, would you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Ms. Lashawlette?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
Good to see you again.
And we're not talking about the zoning rewrite this time. Okay, this is a countywide ordinance amendment dealing with an issue that we call choke points, dealing with subdivision improvements. So this is an amendment to the subdivision ordinance. And the ordinance that we are amending was adopted on July 3, 2018. And this amendment dealt with road improvements for subdivisions. The goal of that ordinance in 2018 was to accommodate the continuity of streets, providing routing options that evenly distribute traffic, provide access at all times, and promote future extensions of roadways. So one provision of that ordinance prohibited choke points, meaning that there's only one road to more than 50 lots. So if that road ever got blocked by a tree down or something like that, there wouldn't be an alternative access point. So that's, the ordinance prevented those choke points. However, we did find that there was a conceptual plan that was approved prior to the adoption of that ordinance, and they would not be able to build out in compliance with their conceptual plan with that choke point ordinance. So what this amendment does is go in and add a grandfather provision that if it was zoned with the approved conceptual plan prior to the date of the adoption, that they, they do not, they are grandfathered from meeting the choke point requirement. During the review, the county attorney also did other cleanup language, but no substantive changes. So I have some black line review of the changes that were made. So the required access points, it says, "All single-family residential developments should provide road networks that provide continuity." Number one, multiple accesses, the language was changed, just clarified, but the content is the same. "All single-family residential developments containing 50 or more lots must provide each lot with a minimum of two separate permanent access points for entrance and exit onto existing public roads. Additional access points may be required as the number of lots increases." That was in there before, it's just clarifying, we could always ask for additional access points, we do not have to. The choke point was the main purpose of the ordinance, unless built in compliance with the conceptual plan approved before July 3, 2018. Again, that was the date of the ordinance's adoption. "Single-family residential developments must be designed so that no individual street segment is sole access to 50 or more lots." And this is a clarification, emergency access. Fire apparatus access roads built for emergency access only must meet all requirements in the Goochlin Fire Prevention Code and cannot be used to satisfy the requirements of this section. And the timing, the access construction must comport with the zoning ordinance requirements in Article 21. And what we're going to ask, those section numbers, 18.10 and 18.12, have been revised now since the zoning ordinance update. So we would ask you to strike those two section numbers with this ordinance and just say, "In accordance with Article 21," which is the article number as well in the new zoning ordinance that would take effect January 1st. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you put black aside for just one? I think this maybe just came in from your Planning Commission presentation. In the, in paragraph two, the word is, unless built...
Can you go to the next page?
Next page. Unless built generally in compliance with a conceptual plan?
That's right.
And that was added by the Planning Commission at their hearing. And so I'm sure that's why it doesn't appear on this slide, but that is in your materials already. The generally is there.
That's right. Correct. It wasn't updated. That's all I have. Okay, I was like... Let me go to my question. Sarah asked me to move off the question page, so we all got distracted.
Questions, Ms. Lashawlette?
Okay, so Ms. Hunter, so just, just so I'm clear, on that, that second paragraph also, no choke, choke points. Unless built generally in compliance with conceptual plan approved before July 3, 2018. Does the plan have to be approved and the buildings built?
No, just the plan. So if they have rezoned the property and... So if they have rezoned the property and they have not built yet, but they had proffered a conceptual plan, they would be exempt from this ordinance.
So if they've proffered the conceptual plan prior to that date, they can have as many single-family residences they want without a second access?
Well, they would build generally in conformance with their conceptual plan and if that's how their conceptual plan was approved, then yes, they could. So it just depends, it just allows them to build what they said they were going to build when they rezoned it.
So we, in theory, could, do we have any like that?
There is one, we have found that there is one, it's Breeze Hill.
So that means that they could have one access for 100 or more?
I think it's about 65, 70 lots that's down past the choke point. So on the south side of the dam, there is one road that provides access to more than 50 lots. It's not, I think it's in the number of about 60 lots. But the point of this ordinance amendment was certainly not to prohibit anybody who already has an approved conceptual plan to continue to move forward with their proffered conceptual plan. So that's why this is adding a grandfather provision.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think along the same lines, I just want to make sure, and this might be more for Ms. McGee, but this doesn't change, now just asking for confirmation of what I believe to be the case, this doesn't change, adopting this ordinance does not change the requirement that proffers that were made in any conceptual plan before this point must still be complied with.
Yes, this does not change any proffers.
So if the proffer was that this lot, that a drive, that an ingress and egress point was going to be for emergency vehicles only, this does not change the fact that that proffer was made and that proffer needs to be fulfilled?
Yeah, proffers supersede this and the only way the proffer could be changed is going through the zoning proffer amendment with two public hearings before the planning commission of board.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Chairman, this might be for Ms. McGee too. So is adding generally illuminate, does that illuminate something additional for us?
The way most proffers are written about conceptual plans, the proffers tend to read the development will be built generally in compliance with the attached conceptual plan. And when we proposed the ordinance language, we weren't trying to be more strict than that, we just didn't think to include the word generally. So it was mentioned by a citizen at the planning commission meeting, you've dropped out the word generally. And we said, you know, we weren't trying to change, any proffer that says we'll build generally in compliance with our conceptual plan, that's what we intend to encompass. So there's no problem to have the word generally in there because that does tend to be what the proffers say.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hunter. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on this ordinance amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. I'll close the public hearing. Thoughts?
Chairman, I move that we approve the ordinance to amend Article 7, Section 913, Gushen County subdivision ordinance to exempt from the choke point subsection developments built in compliance with conceptual plans approved before July 3, 2018 and to add the clarifying language as presented.
And would it be amended?
Pardon me, and would you, to amend it?
Strike, I'm sorry, thank you, striking. Striking the sections in 913, four, subsection four, deleting the words sections 18.10 and 18.12. So it just reads, it actually, that sentence ends at Article 21.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Chairman, do we have to add the generally?
No, that's already in the packet. That was just an error on the slide. It's already in the packet.
As presented in the packet, not the slide.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? See none? Mr. Podolski, would you call the roll?
Ms. Lashlet?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, next item, you're taking a break. Okay, Ms. McGee?
Good evening. Your last item tonight is a public hearing on the, on ordinance to re-add, frankly, sections 781 through 787 of the Gushen County Code that regulate weeds and garbage. As you may recall from several months ago, this article of the ordinance was inadvertently omitted when we adopted the fee schedule because some other sections surrounding it were amended and this inadvertently got removed. We then brought it before you to put back in and we were able to engage through the questions that you raised, both at the public hearing and in meetings since, about the ordinance. We had the opportunity to go through and look at how the ordinance has been enforced and there are really two portions of the ordinance. One is not permitting the accumulation or storage of garbage that would create a public nuisance and that is applied at any property throughout the county. And then the other aspect is where tall grass and weeds, essentially over eight, 12 inches or more, excuse me, are not permitted on many properties in the county, though I cannot say for all. Agricultural, for instance, is specifically excluded under state law. What we're able to do is we went through the ordinance and checking how we have used it, is to discover that while it is not something that takes up a great deal of staff time, the zoning compliance officer does in fact, has in fact, used every element of what's in our ordinance to address a citizen complaint about either garbage or tall grass and weeds, whether it's been in a platted residential subdivision, in property that's zoned residential but is not in a subdivision plat, or on property that's more commercial in nature, industrial business zoning and so forth. And so what we were able, again, to determine, and then also for the garbage, that that has been applied in both east and western parts of the county and on different properties. Again, it's not like it's used all the time, but the, probably around 10 times a year for these ordinances, and by that I mean both garbage and grass and weeds separately. But nonetheless, they have been in use and have been able to address concerns that our citizens have. So having gone through that process, we are now in a much more informed manner back before you to request that you re-adopt these sections of the, into the Gushen County ordinance.
Questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. So Ms. McGee, I'm in favor of this, I like to see us adopt it, but I'm just a little confused about the penalty section and just want to ensure that I'm clear. So a person who violates this section and fails to comply with the notice, subject to a civil penalty, not to exceed 50 bucks for the first violation, or violations from the same set of operative facts. And here I'm thinking garbage is what's in the basis of my question. The next sentence says a civil penalty for subsequent violations not arising from the same set of operative facts within 12 months should not exceed $250. So what do you mean, okay, so there's, what is an operative fact? So they've got a pile of garbage there, is it like the same garbage or, I don't know, how you say it's not the same operative facts?
Sure, so if it is garbage, yes ma'am, there are two different ways to go about that. When they get convicted of it and you get $50 awarded by a court, and let me preface this, let me step back and preface this this way, and that is, these complaints over the, back to the 2013, as long as we've looked at it, have never actually had to result in court action. They have been brought into compliance through the action simply of the notice of violation and working with property owners. But in the event that any one of these should ever end up in court and a civil penalty and the judge says there's $50, well, that doesn't remove the trash. If that same trash remains in place, the only thing you have next to do is to come back and ask again for a penalty. That is the same set of operative facts. It's not sufficient, for instance, if it's just the same property and garbage is back, I think the court would determine that that is not necessarily the same set of operative facts. So it addresses the fact that once you get somebody fined $50, they may not in fact either cut their grass or remove that trash, in which case, that's the situation where you could go up for your penalty. You can request, again, you can only ask the court, could you please reward more if you've proven that it's not the same set, excuse me, if you've proven that it is the same set.
It says not. That's where I've got stuck.
I see, yep, for the negative. I believe that not is an error.
It makes more sense to me to have the not removed.
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay. All right, then, each business day during the same violations found to have existed shall constitute a separate offense. So it gets reported on January 1, then every, every day?
That is not how Gushen County enforces its zoning ordinance, though that does, it is very standard language in zoning ordinances across the Commonwealth in every jurisdiction I've worked in. It is, allows you to not run into the argument from a defendant, well, that's been here a month already and you didn't come last month and do it, and so now I'm allowed to continue it, or you didn't handle that offense. So it is not a situation where in fact, the inspector has taken out an ordinance, a violation for every day, but it does allow, make sure that you don't run into some problems with arguments from defendants about why this has pre-existed and therefore something that's occurred in the past.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, great, so we take the not out of that?
Yes.
I guess fourth line. Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, to follow on Ms. Laskellet's point, when you started that example with, you know, January 1, you know, the notice period, there's what, 30-day notice period with the letter? I mean, there's a...
On grass, it might be 10 days, but it could be 30 days.
But I guess my point, Ms. Laskellet, is that, you know, that the everyday violation doesn't start the first day you identify the problem, because there's a notice period with a letter and an opportunity to cure, if you will, cure the situation. And beyond the cure period is when that would start to kick in. So it doesn't kick in right away, just after the cure period. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay. And that's fairly accurate, what I've described? Okay. Generally accurate, is that what they...
One more thing. Is it the same situation in paragraph two? Same or similar violations not arising from the same offense, from the same set of operative facts? I'm not sure. In the event three, civil penalties have previously been imposed?
I apologize, I've sort of allowed myself to fall. I actually believe the nots are intentional and the reason is because if someone is repeatedly violating it, that's where you want to get them to make the penalties go up. So I think that is, now that I've seen it down in the second one, I'm more convinced that in fact...
It should stay in?
It should stay in, yes, ma'am. And the idea is, you know, they take it away the first time and then they add it next week and they move, they take care of it and they're at it, especially for trash, you know, and that should be taken care of.
How do you know it's not the same trash?
The photos tend to make that up. Again, if you can't convince the court that, then it's all at the court's decision-making, is this the same set of operative facts? But I don't think we're very troubled with that in terms of photographs. That's why most zoning enforcement actions are based on having good photographs of what's there.
And the same thing is true on the grass. If you've got grass growing over, what is it, a foot, whatever?
Yes.
So you've given them the $50, well, civil penalty.
Mr. Chair, so I think what we're wrestling with is two separate sets of circumstances.
Yeah.
One's a repeat offender and one's a continual offender, continuance, if you will. So in the first instance with the continuance, you go to the judge, you get a fine, they might not clean it up or take care of the problem, they might not cure it. What's the remedy then? Because it sounds like in the second instance where it's a repeat offender, where they have trash one day, long grass the next day, and junkyard the third, you know, if they're repeat offending, then there's the daily imposition and it bites pretty hard. But what about the continual one where it's the same set of circumstances where you got a fee or a fine through the judge and they don't bring it back into compliance? What then would be the remedy to bring them into compliance?
That does presume, and I haven't tried this in a civil penalty case, again, remember these cases have never actually gone to court. You know, the presumption tends to be, can you get the court to say you need to take care of that?
Should be a court order to...
At the time that they do the civil penalty. You may or may not have that success, I just haven't done it before because we don't, aren't usually doing civil penalties and we haven't taken this ordinance. But that being said, you know, I think what, I think the idea, and of course this is state law language that we've incorporated into ours, but I'm still going to defend it because we only use it if we think it works. The way that whole thing works together is because you have the right to do every day, they don't want to go up to 250. So you could, in theory, take it out, you know, day after day and get that $50 for each one from the same set of operative facts. And that's why I think they have the difference between the two, because of that situation potential. I don't have any concern that we can't get this taken care of. In fact, I've got a, you know, circuit court action to take out and get an injunction like that, so I hate to get hung up on something that hasn't happened and that we would handle.
You get the fine, they don't cure it, you petition the court for action and they'll, not a problem there.
Absolutely.
And then if it's a person that has, you know, a repeat offender, keeps changing a different offense every week, then there's the escalation clause and that tends to bring things back to... And again, we've never had to do this.
Never had to.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
My apologies for not catching that, was Ms. Laskellet first asked about it.
That's okay, no problem.
Any more, Ms. Laskellet?
And is like anything else, if they were to be approved tonight, goes into effect immediately?
Yes, ma'am. We haven't had this ordinance now since we adopted the budget.
Why? So it goes into effect right away?
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have, I have some, I guess my original points haven't changed a whole lot. Because as I look at this, the definition of weeds includes poison ivy, poison oak, bushes or any other foreign vegetative growth. Bushes can be part of a landscape plant. This doesn't say ugly bushes or anything. And so, and if you look, and it said, but it says accepting native woodlands. Well, I believe poison oak and poison ivy are in every Virginia native woodland. I'm always careful for it, but I think it's pretty much everywhere. And in my subdivision, for example, where the dry hydrant, the supposed dry hydrant is, it's very dry actually, the actual, the HOA bylaws say that it must be left undisturbed because it's a, the Army Corps of Engineers said it's a wetlands and whatever, so how do you deal with that? To me, it's a slippery slope and this year was a horrible year for tall grass, but the majority of it was VDOT. And so we may tell a citizen, you need to cut the grass. If I cut my grass to the area that's not VDOT, I could still have a two-foot section of grass that is VDOT. And could I be fined for that or would we tell VDOT to be, to do it? I mean, that's my concern is that we're asking the citizens to do, to be at a level that's different than what we are, we're forcing ourselves to be. And then the other thing is that it includes developed or undeveloped property in business, residential, commercial or industrial. So that means that all of West Creek that is in, has been zoned for commercial, somebody could come and file a complaint and say, you need to cut the grass along the edge of the woods. Or do we... of the woods, or do we call that native woodlands and leave it alone? I know it's complaint-based, and I don't think anybody would do that, but, that's, that's my concern.
Let me just clarify for you.
Please.
What I was trying to read through is, it starts off, the owners of all vacant or occupied, developed or undeveloped property within the boundaries of platted residential subdivisions.
Or, and.
And then, and other areas zoned for residential. And so, I was trying to figure out where the break was there, to whether it's the undeveloped property within only subdivisions and so forth. I, I do think that there's the opportunity to use native woodlands for land that is undeveloped. At the same time, we did have a situation in the county where there was a platted subdivision, and the undeveloped lots within that, the developer was not cutting the grass. And so, we know that it was used against vacant property within undeveloped, I mean, undeveloped property within a platted subdivision. But, with respect to, as you say, you know, West Creek, my understanding is that to the extent it's undeveloped, it's, it's maintained as in essence native woodlands.
So, the fact that it's undeveloped, but we say on here undeveloped property, so, the owners of all vacant or occupied, developed or undeveloped property. So, to me, that means we could tell somebody with undeveloped property, you need to, you need to clean it up, cut the grass.
True, but when you look up at the weeds, that's where it talks about the fact that it excludes up there, other than, you know, native woodlands, ornamental shrubbery, flowers, gardens, vegetables, trees, and native woodlands. Then your discussion about VDOT, I believe the board and, and citizens may be less aware, the boards are aware, we are not entitled to enforce any element of our zoning code against property owned by VDOT, the state, or any state entity. We simply don't have that authority, and, so, we, we're not allowed to, to have impact on that through an ordinance.
So, we have a lot of, there are some areas in the county, maybe there are agricultural areas, along Broad Street, there's a lot of kudzu, that's definitely not a native woodland. Is that an issue? I know, I know that people try to kill it, and you, and they can't, it, it comes back. But, my, my house itself, I have a strip of grass, lawn, whatever, next to the road, and then there's a wooded area between that and my house. That's kind of overgrown, there, I, I know there's poison ivy in there. Could I be forced to clear that out by, by somebody complaining that it is a platted subdivision and...
So, are you saying in the native wood next to your house? On, on property that you own?
Yeah, it's native wood between, there's a strip about as wide as that road right there, maybe as wide as to the wall, of grass that I cut and regularly, and then between, often enough that I've never, nobody's complained about it, but, anyway, between there and the, and my house, there's an area much, probably three times that size of trees and shrubs and native woodlands.
We, we keep using that term to, because that, again, that is accepted by the ordinance, nobody has to, to keep their native woodlands cut.
Cut.
And that language follows what's in the state law as well.
Okay. I just, I just feel like there's some slippery slope there somewhere, I don't know. Today, the county's not enforcing this to the extreme, but it could happen, and that's my concern, so. Anyway, any other comments, discussion?
Well, is native woodlands defined?
Not in this ordinance, no, ma'am.
I mean, but is there, because you're calling it native woodlands, I mean, could someone else say it's not?
Well, but I, like I said, my problem is that my native woodlands have poison ivy. So, it's, so it's kind of, it kind of contradicts itself there.
It sure does, right? Probably poison oak?
Yeah, poison, I don't know, I don't recognize poison oak, but...
On three leaves.
I usually discover poison ivy a few days later.
It definitely has weeds, it probably has weeds, right?
As, as you read this, I mean, I think his question, do we have to go through all the forested land in our county and get rid of poison ivy, I guess?
We do not.
Okay, well, there's your answer.
Only if it's greater than twelve inches.
But, e- even then, not if it's in native woodlands.
So, you don't, if it's, if the land's not cleared, if it's left in woodland, then you don't need to, so if you have woodlands in front of your house...
I guess I would like to have a better definition of native woodlands.
I agree with you.
Because if it doesn't include poison ivy and poison oak...
But, but, I mean, it does, as laid out there, weeds are defined to include grass, poison ivy, bush, bushes, or other foreign vegetative growth, comma, other than these things, ornamental shrubbery, flowers, gardens, vegetables, trees, and native woodlands. So, bushes appears both as covered, but then also not if it's ornamental shrubbery. And so, you know, the vegetative growth and so forth, not if it's native woodlands. So, I don't believe, just because poison ivy's in the first part, it's included, it, it has to be taken out, even if it's a native woodlands. So, we, we don't have to go out and take it out of the woods.
I guess it would be clearer for me if it said, grass, weeds, poison ivy, poison oak, bushes, unless they are in native woodlands. I don't know. I'll, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, maybe somebody will have the magic, magic word. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak? For or against this addition, please step forward. Nobody coming to help me.
He's down to a minute, I don't know what happened.
He's got thirty seconds, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll talk fast, John Thelaw, fifteen twenty-one, Manikin Road. Showing up at the board meetings as I have over the last eight years, I do have some perspective on this, and, and when this, or some semblance of this was originally passed, and I appreciate this as being revised, I, I, I express the opinion that the government that governs the best governs the least. And having just sat here and witnessed the better part of thirty minutes of you folks trying to figure out what you're doing, seriously, makes me ask, is a citizen going to be able to do the same? And, and so, I heard the comment, maybe someone will come up with the magic word. Magic word is, don't pass it. Just let the county and the citizens address this and limit this to subdivisions or HOAs who have the ability to control what they have done within their individual developments, and let's not try and nanny the rest of the county. Are we solving a problem that isn't existing? And I appreciate that there have been instances, and Mr. Peterson has helped illuminate me a bit, of property values, because there have been, either through foreclosure or otherwise abandonment, properties within fairly, I don't want to say exclusive, but, but high dollar, or certainly higher dollar neighborhoods, and they do have some blight to the neighborhood. But, as a citizen, just sitting here and listening for good intention struggling as to what are the definitions in this, as a citizen, I'm right there with you. I don't know that I can understand what you are trying to do, and I get concerned sometimes that I am unintentionally not in compliance with an ordinance, and is this such a press, pressing problem in the county that it requires an additional layer of ordinance and burden to the citizenry? So, the magic word might be, just don't pass it, and the light flashed.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle.
Again, is, how do we rectify the, which one is considered a subdivision, and which one is, is A one or A two? How do, where, where do you make that distinction? Just because somebody's, somebody's property may be in a subdivision, and others' people are A one, is, how, how does that work? Mr. McGee? With this ordinance?
Ms. Moore.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Tell us your concerns and then...
My, my concerns is, how do you know if you're, you're going to be, if your grass is too high, if you're zoned agricultural, you know, and if you've got three acres, and you're, may not be in a subdivision, or may be in a subdivision? Is the zoning?
Yes, the zoning is, is what, what this, I think the platted may be different, because there may be some, are there platted subdivisions that are agricultural? A one?
I, I don't know the answer to that, yeah.
Okay, I, I just, I just want to know if, if, part of my land is going to be, I'm going to have to cut.
It, it depends on your zoning.
Okay.
We'll, we'll discuss it some more.
No, it does depend upon zoning, and it is the state law that does not, not allow you to enforce against any property zoned agricultural, so that would be the...
So, if it's, if a platted subdivision is agricultural, that wouldn't be enforceable?
I don't believe so.
All right, so, anyone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, just add, and certainly it's the board's prerogative not to re-adopt this, I think there's, without question, there's consistency on the garbage side of this. It's been the weeds piece that the board has been hung up on since day one.
Just getting away with it.
We've, we've researched this probably as much as any other ordinance we've done. We've brought it to you, we looked at all the examples countywide since it was adopted last time. We could not define geographic areas any better that made sense to draft an ordinance to define geographic areas. We analyzed every violation that has come in since the last ordinance was adopted, all of which were resolved by voluntary compliance, and we had to take no further action on that. It addressed all the outstanding concerns that have been brought to us. Certainly, you can not have this on the books, and as we get complaints, we can let folks know, we have nothing that regulates that, and that's the way it's going to be, and that's certainly a, a board option. Without a tool in the toolbox, there is no way staff can address this on behalf of residential concerns and complaints that are brought to us. And if that, that is the board's prerogative to not have that, it has worked. It has brought issues of concern into compliance. I, I appreciate the definition sensitivity. I think, if you look back at the violations we've issued, there is a common sense kind of practicality to, to applying law. And, we would have had issues that, we didn't have resistance on the others that have, that have come into voluntary compliance, they did so, and we never had to follow up much again. We're, you know, we're not out there trying to split hairs on that section that you've been cutting versus the woods and what's growing in the woods. And so, I think this is a philosophical kind of debate that you're ending up having of, do I believe that we should be, I mean, look, trust me, staff doesn't enjoy being the weed police either, be very clear, we don't like going out and doing it, but what's our alternative? Nothing. And so, I think philosophically, if you're opposed to, to regulation on weeds, that, that's a respectable opinion, and if you believe in having a tool to address it, that's also a respectable opinion. So, I'm not sure how much more definition we can bring to you to address this, it's, I think it's a prerogative kind of position. I think Mr. Lyle's perspective is just as valuable as the alternative, and so, I think that's where you're at.
Mr. Chairman, out. And thank you, Mr. Bodeski, I think, I think you're right, Mr. Lyle, I appreciate that same, but I don't want to throw out the garbage with the weeds.
Exactly.
So, the garbage in the weeds.
Keep the garbage.
So, as far as the weeds go, I'd like to keep the tool in a toolbox, I don't think we're going to, you know, staff up and, you know, assign people to the weed police, but I, I do want to have the tool in the toolbox, because there have been situations, and, you know, again, you would hope that in most cases, somebody will call their neighbor, or even maybe cut their neighbor's grass, if, if they know somebody's struggling, or, or out of town, or whatever the case may be. But, I think the idea of, when it gets out of control, it's been neglected for a while, particularly in our populated village areas, Centerville and places like that, I think county going through the stages of growth that we're going should have this tool in the toolbox. But, we, we do want to be clear, and I think we did get, we do that sometimes, get into these philosophical debates, maybe I did a little bit on the signed ordinance tonight, but, but I think, with, and the endpoint, I think, is we always want to get to something that citizens do understand, that we understand, and that, and that makes sense for our community, but not be heavy hand, heavy-handed. So, I, I, I'm in favor of this, I could not find a defin, it took me a while to find a definition of native woodland. There's, the Google results are all about Scotland, but, but, but I found...
Don't use Google.
That's the original... Yeah, I should use, I, I'm going to bing it instead here, but, native woodland is defined as a community of naturally occurring species regenerating by natural means, if, if nothing else, we can learn something like that tonight. But, I, looking at this definition, foreign, and native woodlands, I mean, I don't know. If we can, if we can fix it, to improve it a little bit, I'm fine, but I, I would hate for us to not adopt this, certainly, like I said, I'd like to keep the garbage in place, but I think there are cases when it would be really nice in the community to have the ability to, if, if a property owner is just thumbing their nose at their neighbors and everybody else, that we could say, hey, you know, there's, there's consequences, and you need to, to, you know, make your, make your property look, you know, not stand out like a sore thumb. Mr. Peters?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Lyle touched on, this isn't a solution searching for a problem, this was something that came to our attention, where citizens brought it to our attention and said, at least in one or two instances, in a platted subdivision, a particular piece of land was either abandoned or under-maintained, or, or just allowed to overgrow completely. And, the next door neighbor that had been maintaining their property fell on very hard financial times, extreme financial distress, and forced the sale of their home, put the for-sale sign out, and agents would drive by, wouldn't even slow down, because they saw the property next door, and they just kept going. And that literally almost forced these folks into bankruptcy, because someone else was depriving them of their, their free sale, their property, by, by having abandoned property right next door. That doesn't even begin to take into account the, the health and safety risks posed by the children playing next door to an abandoned property where there's nuisance animals of all kinds. So, from a, from a public health, public safety, property rights, a number of different angles, we decided that, and by the way, there was no HOA, there was no other authority involved whatsoever. So, they're petitioning the government for redress where their property rights were being eroded. So, we felt an incumbent on us to at least take a look and see what could be done. I think what you're hearing tonight is most everybody up here struggling with not wanting to have government have a heavy hand, but have a light hand, to just protect property rights and health and safety within the community. So, how do you have a light touch and not a heavy hand, and still protect citizens from a health, safety, and property rights angle? This is an attempt to do that, it's a, I guess we did defer this, because it's not something we embrace lightly or quickly, and during that deferral, we did some research and learned some more, and what I learned was that, of course, we all know there's a complaint-based system, and there were very, very few complaints, that the complaints were not concentrated only in RPUD, or in certain development areas, or in the villages, they were scattered kind of throughout the, the county, they were not very...
There were not very many of them. And that because this was on the books, or a simple letter, one time, to say, hey, can you please address this, was sufficient. So there, there hasn't been any court cases, there hasn't been any fines, but just having, having something to say, hey, you know what, at this point, you're starting to, to step over some, some line. With a very light hand, the government was able to bring that back into compliance. But I would be one of the first to say, if we, if this ever does develop into a heavy hand, or gets out of control, or, or starts to be used more than infrequently, or, or creates a problem, I'd revisit this very quickly. And in fact, I think that's what we're doing here today, is revisiting a decision from years ago that we deferred from our last meeting, to try and get this right. Because we, none of us want a heavy hand, we all want a light hand in government. So that's a little bit of the background, in terms of why, how we got to where we are today. And if citizens are trying to figure out what it is we're trying to do here, and why we're having trouble with, that's a little bit more of the, the background. So that's, I'll yield back, Mr. Chair.
That's a good, good summary, Mr. Peterson. I do, and we discussed this in our two-on-two, about the possibility of making it so that if the, if the violating site is in, within it, an HOA subdivision, that we would require that the HOA first attempt to correct the problem? And I believe Ms. Hunter said at the time that it could be done through a policy?
Yes, policy or procedure of community development.
Is there a better way to do it within the ordinance?
I, I, I think the appropriate way to do it is within the policy, because you'll have more ability to take into account, the, the thought was that you want someone who's bringing that complaint to the county to first ask, is there an HOA in your neighborhood? Because we don't otherwise necessarily know that there are or not. And then, is that HOA active? In other words, there could be an HOA on the books that nobody served as in an office or role on for years. And so, if there is an active HOA in response to those questions, the citizen would be told, have you brought this issue before that? And ask for the HOA to act. And if they say no, could you do the, you know, the county needs you to do that before you come back to us, see if you, take to your HOA, to see if there's another place that can get taken care of. However, writing that into ordinance form with all the things, but not if it's active and so forth, I, I think just overly complicates it. So I think it's properly in a policy and a procedure. And it is, yes, intended to accompany the ordinance, but it, I mean, it hasn't been written. But that is exactly what the board was told we would do, to take, again, that light hand that Mr. Peterson described, if there is another entity, say an HOA, who could take care of this, then let's have them take care of it. But if you got to a situation with an active HOA who refused to take care of it, then I think the county still wants to be in a position to be able to do something, if the other resources have already been sought.
Thank you. And Mr. Peterson mentioned abandoned property. This is not really talking about abandoned property. It's about weeds and garbage. If there's a, a house, and there are many in Gushland that are in bad shape, abandoned, nobody's living in them, do we go after those now?
Again, we have a complaint-based system. I, I don't know, we, we collected up a lot of information. I don't know that we got any information about whether a home was abandoned or not abandoned. So I'm not sure I can clearly answer that. Again, the system's been working, as it's been in place since 2013, but I don't know that I know every fact about how it's been used.
I mean, it could be, it could, Mr. Chair, it could be actually abandoned, it could be in fact, de facto abandoned by being under-maintained, it could be foreclosed, or a bank or another interest decides, somebody could move out of the county and just not care about it. There's a variety of different ways it could end up in, in that situation. So I don't think we need to get into why it, it's that way, but just more than it is, as opposed to, to get into the why.
And I, and I think the situation, perhaps, that Mr. Peterson was describing earlier, was actually somebody who didn't live, lived in Virginia Beach, or someplace sort of out of reach, but was able to, to work through this ordinance, as opposed to what you might think of a structure nobody's lived in for 70 years, and you might think of as abandoned.
Yeah, perhaps the ones that haven't been lived in for 150 years have been returned to native woodlands.
Some have trees growing through them, so you may be right. All right, so any, any other discussion?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman. When, when this was originally, the weed ordinance was originally passed in 2013, I voted against it. And I'm still opposed to the weed ordinance. But I really want the garbage part of it, because we've had so many complaints and some very, very serious situations, and I can name a couple right now, within my district. So I'm, for the same reasons that you had mentioned, I'm still opposed to it, because I think it's a slippery slope, don't think we should be having the government do this, but I'd like to keep the garbage part. That's my comment. I'm going to have a heck of a vote on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance to add sections 7-81 through 7-87 regarding regulating weeds and garbage as it is presented to us this evening.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Before we go there, I want to be clear that despite how I vote on this, I'm going to call in a complaint tomorrow. So, no, not on myself. But I just want to be clear, because I, I still think we're, we're going too far with the weeds. And, and a little unclear, but, but I'll leave it at that. I do believe that we do need something, I just, I'm just not sure this is clear enough yet. So. Mr. Budeski, would you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Lashawet?
Nope.
Mr. Alvarez?
Nope. All right, so it passes three to two. Any other discussion or other items? If not, the Board of Supervisors will adjourn to multiple dates. So Tuesday, November 26th, at 1:30 PM, the Audit and Finance Committee will be meeting in room 250 right here. And that meeting's open to the public. On that same afternoon, at 3:00 PM, the Board of Supervisors special meeting in, in this room, and the meeting's open to the public, and that'll be to go over our audit report. And then on December 3rd, at 12:30 PM, the Board will meet at the Agricultural Center at Central High School for a ribbon cutting and tour. Again, it's open to the public. And then, that same afternoon, at 2:00 PM, there will be a farewell gathering for departing supervisors and retirees. This doesn't say where it is, but will everybody know? And it's open to the public. And then, on that same day, at 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM, for our regular meeting and public hearings. Thank you all for hanging out with us. Appreciate it. We're adjourned.